I call to order. Call to order the August fourteenth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a roll call, please.
Jeff here. Michael here.
Lynn here.
Eric here.
Daryl here.
And Amanda is coming.
She hasn't told me she's not.
We'll add her in when she gets here. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have the approval of the regular agenda. Has everybody read tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. You have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
I sec. Go ahead. Eric second.
One second.
Motion by Michael, second.
No, motion by Jeff.
Motion by Jeff. Second by.
Eric.
Eric.
You're confusing me, Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes. They're blank very many. Has everybody read them?
Yes.
So I have a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-fourth.
I move that we accept the minutes as presented in our packet here.
May I have a second?
I second.
Motion by Darren. Daryl, I'm sorry. Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Does anybody have any conflicts of interest on tonight's meeting? No, 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 no. Public comment. Is there anybody here? No? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, we have no public comments, so we will close public comment. Special presentations, we have mine. Design review and last year land use public hearings. We will start with Madison introducing.
So for zero zero one seven miles in lane, this is a three-bedroom, three thousand four hundred and twenty-nine square foot single-family home, measured to the midpoint of the roof at twenty-five feet eleven and seven eighths inches. Under the twenty-eight-foot height limit, parking is adequate with four off-street spaces, and two of which are provided in the garage, which is allowable per the PUD, approved PUD guide. All setbacks are respected, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at four hundred and seventy feet. The four hundred and seven feet. The staff identified no issues and recommends approval of plans.
Please have another show that Amanda arrived at five thirty-two. Thank you.
So I'm Don Agers with Agers Architecture, here to answer any questions you have on any of the items on the agenda tonight.
Does anybody have any questions on this zero zero one seven miles in lane family residence? Nobody? Open to public comment? There is nobody in the audience? Is there anybody on? No one?
No one on Zoom.
There are no comments? There is no public comment? Regular? Nobody has anything? May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve zero zero one seven miles in lane.
Oh, second?
Go ahead.
Motion by Michael, second by Daryl. Is there any further conversation? No? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Jeff, aye.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Okay. Zero zero three one, miles in lane.
This is a four-bedroom, four thousand three hundred and fifty-six square foot, single-family home, measured to the midpoint of the roof at twenty-seven feet four and five eighths inches. Parking is fine with four off-street spaces, two in the garage. All setbacks are respected, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at four hundred and forty-five square feet. Staff has identified no issues and recommends approval of plans.
We start with you, Daryl. Do you have any questions on this?
No, no question.
I do not have any questions on this one.
You can ask questions. I don't have any, no?
I don't have any.
Open to public comment? There's nobody in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom on this one?
No one on Zoom.
So we will close public comment. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve zero zero three one, final plan for miles in lane.
May I have a second?
Oh, second?
Motion by Michael, second by Daryl. Any further conversation? No? May I have a roll call vote?
Jeff, aye.
Okay.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Number two. Number three, zero one seven one, miles in lane.
This is a four-bedroom, three thousand seven hundred and eight square foot, single-family home, measured to the midpoint of the roof at twenty-seven feet three and a half inches. Parking is fine with four off-street spaces, two of which are in the garage. All setbacks are respected, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at three hundred and eighty-three square feet. Staff has identified no issues and recommends approval of the plans.
Okay. Anybody? No? 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 We're moving too fast.
I move that we accept the.
I need public comment to be open.
I said we're moving a little faster, let's slow down. Nobody is in the audience, but I'll open to public comment just in case there's somebody on Zoom.
No one on Zoom.
Okay. Close public comment. Now you go for it, Daryl.
I move that we accept zero one seven one, miles in lane as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
We'll let Amanda have it, since she didn't.
Fair enough.
Daryl?
Aye.
Has made motion, Amanda made the second. Any further conversation? No? With that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Jeff, aye.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Okay. Zero one seven six, miles in lane.
This is a four-bedroom, three thousand five hundred and sixty square foot, single-family home, measured to the midpoint of the roof at twenty-seven feet eleven and a half inches. Parking is fine with four off-street spaces, two of which are in the garage. All setbacks are respected, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at four hundred and two square feet. Staff has identified no issues and recommends approval of the plans.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? No questions? We'll open to public comment. Nobody in the audience?
No one on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom? We'll close public comment. May I have a motion, please?
I have a motion. Pass zero one seven six miles in lane. Are approved. Zero one seven six miles in lane.
I think you can make a motion. You can vote on it. Yeah.
I second that motion.
Motion by Eric. Got in there. Second by Amanda. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Jeff, aye.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Daryl, aye. Okay. We got that done. Next. Am I at zero two oh one?
Hmm.
Okay.
This is a four-bedroom, three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six square foot, single-family home, measured to the midpoint of the roof at twenty-seven feet and an eighth inch. Under the twenty-eight-foot height limit, parking is fine with four off-street spaces, two of which are in the garage. All setbacks are respected, and the proposal is under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at three hundred and sixty-five square feet. Staff has identified no issues and recommends approval of plans.
Okay. Anybody? Speak up if there are other hold reviews. No?
I have a question.
That's my. That's my.
Okay. Uh, for it. Um, I know last, uh, last meeting I was asked about, um, the wood mulch under the decks.
Correct.
Uh, and you were going to check with your landscaper to see
if those changes or what's going on. So right now, everything, um, all of the shrub beds and areas between the houses is called out as wood bark on the plans. Um, we did not find any restrictions within town documents that limited that. Um, it's something they're look, going to take a look at, um, but it may become a cost issue of changing from the wood bark to gravel in those areas.
Yeah. I, I wasn't suggesting it, but I was just pointing it out as to possible.
Yeah. We, we did take a look at it, and I did go back and verify that it is a wood bark that's called out between all the buildings and, and within those planting beds.
To Earl's, we, we have this conversation around the, you know, fire protection and stuff. I feel like this, um, packet was the first one there was a, it looked like a round patio. There were, I don't feel like I've seen one before.
Yeah, I think that is the first.
It's the first one. It actually looks like it's going to be a fire pit, but I didn't see, I mean, sort of gas line or extension out to that yard.
So it is, I think it is labeled on the plans as a gas fire pit.
Okay. And I just missed it. I know it's not this one, but I just wondered because that's, you know.
Yeah, we, we've actually had a couple homeowners request wood burning fireplaces, and we've noted that, you know, the town code does not allow
Wood burning?
solid fuel burning devices. So we included that exterior as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we do allow out burning ones still. Yeah.
Can I make a quick, quick comment? Just because it's topical. Uh, Daryl, I have been serving on a Wildland Urban Interface Code Group, with folks from the county and all the fire districts and all that stuff. And they're working towards uh, trying to put in front of each of the towns and all the special districts, effectively a code that everyone could adopt that would have things like defensible space that we don't have now. So what I did was go through our code and provide to Eric Lovegren of the county every single place in our code that deals with landscaping, access, whatever, that has to do with how, how they view a defensible, uh, structure. My point in bringing this up is it's coming. So we, we adopted landscape standards a year and a half ago that were aimed at water-wise landscaping. Immediately after we did that, I think, uh, during the approval hearing, Elliot said, well, what about, uh, firewise landscaping design? And so I think we're going to revisit those either as part of our code update or as part of some uh, initiative that the council adopts in, in line with this Wildland Urban Interface Code Group.
Yeah. I, I know the fire district is very, very interested in this. It just.
Yeah.
We've, we've got reports from insurance companies, what they're doing about it, and it go, this ain't fair, you know? So is there something that we can do as fire districts?
Right.
So that, that's why I've kind of brought it up a little bit.
Yeah.
It's just FYI.
Part, part of the issue is, you know, if, if you look at the Eagle County wildfire standards, there, you're not allowed any, um, caniferous plantings within thirty feet of the building. Um, so that means everything on most of your lots in town are all going to be deciduous trees and shrubs. Um, and I think there's a three-feet buffer around the perimeter of the foundation, um, that needs to be gravel within the, within the county's guideline. So if you even look at those as a basis, I think it's a great start because that's even at their moderate wildfire danger. You jump into their high and you're not planting a tree at all. Um, it, it gets pretty severe pretty quick uh, when you get into the high wildfire danger. But that's a great document to, to resource that Eric has put together.
Well, there would be restrictions on that. For instance, Pine Street backs up to the hillside. Will there be a restriction on how close they can go to that hillside?
Yeah, I don't know how that's going to play out. And we, you know, we talked about how is this actually going to, what impact will it have? Will it really only be applicable to new projects or major remodels? Um, that's probably, because I don't know how we could retroactively go into people's yards and say, okay, start. I mean, the Town of Vail has been pretty proactive. Um, but they've also done it on, hey, let us come assess your yard, and then we'll tell you what you can do, and then we'll give you money to take out your trees, right? That might be how, if, if it goes anywhere in the Town of Minter, that might be how we handle it.
I think that's the direction the district's going.
Good.
Be invited and say, this is what could be done if you want to do it. It's up to you to do it or not, you know?
Yeah, I know the restrictions in some of the communities has created problems between neighbors. Um, we're doing a brand-new home in Cortiera, and basically because of the size of the house and the lot, we're having to clear all of the undergrowth thirty feet away from the house. And all of a sudden strips all the vegetation between homes. They're like, we no longer have any, you know, the neighbor showed up and said, you can't do this. You're taking away our privacy. It's like, well, it's mandated by the county. We don't have an option. So finding that balance is, is a, is a little tricky.
Well, mine is more about the fire pits.
Right.
Um, because there is one on the block by me that I wasn't actually, I knew where it was. I could see the flames. I did recently have to see it because FedEx left a package at my front door that belonged to a neighbor. And so I took it over there. And it's very close to that hillside and has no cover on it. It's a new round one. I don't know if that makes a difference.
It does, it's not supposed to, like, if it's certain restrictions, it's not supposed to be open.
Well, that's my question. Work on, on fire pits in backyards.
Well, adding to your, your county and your city wildfire restrictions, um, Grand County just adopted stage two, which means no fires outside of any kind, no cigarettes outside. You can't operate gas, chainsaws, lawn mowers, all of that.
What about barbecue grills?
Uh, if it has a switch where you can turn off the gas with a single motion, then you can use a gas grill outside. Um, but no open flames of any other kind. And, and that's, you know, that's jurisdiction by jurisdiction on how they adopt that. But that's, that would be one way to, you know, a, address a wood burning fire pit.
Yeah, and as a private homeowner, I can understand what they're saying by using it between neighbors and things. But I can also, in my case, I would say probably, well, first of all, I don't have thirty feet around my home.
Right.
I have had the best, ten on the sides, maybe twelve. Front and back are good. There's still not thirty feet, though. Back is, front isn't.
Right.
Um, but I do have some trees in there, and I would hate to lose them.
Yeah. But that's where, as a community, you got to look at that because you could be denuding all of these town lots to the property lines because they're within that boundary.
Yeah.
And you'd have to figure out.
But those trees are all usually in sections. So I have big swaths of nothing. You know what I mean?
Right.
And I have some trees.
Well, I apologize for getting us down in that rabbit hole.
No, I know.
You know, the bark mulch, not a great idea. That's a brand-new home. Your idea is probably a better one. That is maybe where we're heading as far as our landscape principles and things like that. Um, I have no idea at this point what's going to get adopted, how it's going to apply to existing residences or remodels or new homes, so.
You calling her brother?
I did. Be more careful next time.
Back to zero two oh one, miles in lane.
Public comment.
Public comment. Anybody? Nobody?
Madison on Zoom?
Nobody.
I make a motion to approve zero two zero one, miles in lane.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Jeff. Is there any further conversation? No? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Jeff, aye.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
Did it. Amanda came at eight thirty-two, and it is eight seventeen eight eight.
I gave you a ten-minute diversion there.
Well, yeah, but, you know, like, we, we've been saying for a long time, and I'm sure, Daryl, you agree. It's not, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Oh, yeah.
And so having the defensible space and like, you know, for everyone in this development, whether they're local or not local, like, they should just not spend money on bark mulch now so that they don't have to dig it out later.
Right. But again, it's still within the discussions of the development group of looking at changing that out.
Yeah.
One, two, we still.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Fireplaces?
Yeah, outside wood burning.
Most of them, yeah, I have one of those tenants. I don't know, I just gave it to him, I'm like.
Pro, and much better, less expensive.
Okay. Next, discussion and direction of, no, F. Ordinance TBD Series two thousand twenty-four, an ordinance amending chapter sixteen, article seventeen of the Midterm Municipal Code regarding lighting standards. Who's taking this?
That'd be me. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so this is a really kind of quick and dirty ordinance that has everything to do with brief, concise. Has everything to do with, uh, the mid-term water tank as a historic structure, the discussions that have been occurring and responses that the town received to, uh, the community survey of, you know, would it be appropriate to light that structure? Uh, the answer clearly was yes. Uh, there's interest in the town to do that. Um, and how best to do that, uh, would be from a uplighting perspective. The code currently does not allow for uplighting of any structures. The town does have in its code an exemption right now for, uh, town events and its, uh, lighting associated with town events. What I've done with this is amend, section sixteen seventeen one eighty, which is exterior illumination standards exemptions, to clarify that not only for a town event, could also apply the exemption, uh, to a town display, uh, which could be seasonal or periodic in nature. So that allows for the lighting plan that the town has been working with a consultant, uh, to develop, uh, to uplight the water tower, the water tank, primarily on a seasonal or periodic basis, with perhaps different colors and things like that.
Ghosted albums.
They won't be quite that detailed, but we'll do fun, fun, solid colors for different holidays.
Blinking. No blinking lights. Cindy and Michelle have been working on this for quite a while.
So Christmas.
And I was the squeaky wheel behind the scenes saying, can't do this. Um, so, you know, I think this is appropriate, uh, particularly because there's been public input on this particular issue. And it's for a very discreet.
I guess the question I have will be set on a timer so that it doesn't have to stay on all night.
I think there has been discussion about that, and it's designed specifically for that.
Number two. Well, I don't, is it going to be solar?
Yes.
So there isn't a major cost involved. But for people who live in that area, which there aren't many, it's still, it, it's lit up. It could, you know, like, could it go off at eleven o'clock at night? Something like that.
Do, do you know if it's fluorescent? Or have they gotten that far?
Uh, they're LED lights.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, and they'll be mounted off the ground, but they'll be projected up towards the. So that's one of the things that I think Cindy looked at was the, where they would be placed uh, and the distance between the next nearest residential structure, so.
It'll project onto that mid-term tank, which is the little thing. Cool. Monty shot.
That's right.
Jeez.
So, um, do we, have, we spoke with, like, our friends within the Forest Service and Colorado Animal. Simply because that area is like heavy-duty. There's mountain lion kills up there. There's tons of deer, there's tons of deer, bears.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe so, though.
Okay. Just wondering if they have any input on to, even with the seasonality. I mean, I suspect that, I don't know, because it's not going to be on all the time. It wouldn't.
Great, great question.
Well, yeah, wildlife. And there, for us, we go along, the nuisance comes through noise, so that if it all turned off at one time, it would be animal country again.
Usually the lighting with the, is like, bird related, migratory birds.
Doesn't affect the bears.
No, it doesn't affect the elk. They were all down low last night, too.
Where?
Just right down by the Ask Turns. Like, right on the road, almost.
In town?
Yeah.
Right side?
Nine.
I'm missing one. I got the walking one. You want to go nine, bro?
Right across the street from Dutch. They're always there.
There I see them, yes. Okay, so, do we have something on the motion for chapter sixteen, article seventeen?
Any public comment to be opened?
Oh, public comment, sorry.
No, I'm due.
I look at them, I go, okay, public comment is open. Anybody out there? No? Anybody? I'm doing, no.
I think I'm gonna get one of those little handheld things that makes a cricket noise.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number TBD series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance amending the town of Minterne, Colorado, amending chapter sixteen, article seven of the Minterne Municipal Code.
May I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion by Michael, second by Daryl. Any further conversation?
Madam Chair, and this is directed to Amanda. Is your question to be formed in a recommendation or a condition, or you want us to just follow up with Michelle and Cindy?
Follow up is necessary, just to, in case it ever comes up again.
Thank you.
Roll call vote?
Jeff, aye.
Michael, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Amanda, aye.
Daryl, aye.
Okay. Discussion direction items, Minterne forward draft ethical five, land use application requirements and procedures.
Main event, thank you, Madam Chair. After many months, you have actual code in front of you. Not the most exciting section of code, but super duper important. This is a large reason why we started this project in the first place, was to try to organize the code, all the different land use application types, all the different subdivision application types, the requirements for submittal, the process, and making all of those very standard, hopefully using clear language and easy to use terms and things like that. We'll see this again probably when we talk about zone districts and dimensional limitations and things like that. But this is, this is a section that we wanted to start with because it has so much to do with everything that we do, the applications that we take in, that you review, the type of information that we ask for, making sure that for someone out there, whether it's an individual property owner or a big time developer, they understand the process from start to finish, what's required of them, generally how, how much effort it's going to take of them. With that, I can't take a lot of credit for this. Matt Farrer has done the lion's share of work to dissect and reconstruct our existing code and then add in recommended changes. What, what he has done, really, in a nutshell, is to create kind of standalone sections for each different land use type, not, here's a land use application type for a conditional use, refer to this section for your submittal requirements, refer to this section for your process, refer to some other section on what the planning commission and the town council are going to do with it. Everything's kind of one stop shopping. So if you're going to apply for a conditional use permit, you go to one section. Right now, it's going to be a lengthy document, but when it gets loaded into muni code, where we go online and find it, you're not going to see the whole thing, right? So with that, I'm going to let Matt wait in here, but I just wanted to recognize his efforts. He's been working on this for a month and a half. And I'm, I'm really pleased with the way it turned out. We have room to make changes to this, and we're looking forward to your input and your critique. I think the idea is that we will take input on this section, continue to revise it and refine it, but we're going to start working on the next module, which will be zone districts and dimensional limitations and development standards, which hopefully we'll be able to then kind of go back to the public for some public input in September, October, when people are back from summer vacation and in town and stuff like that. So, Matt, are you out there?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Well, Scott, thank you for that introduction. As Scott mentioned, the, this section, well, first of all, this section has consolidated the various types of land use applications that the existing code has. And in the existing code, there, there's, some of them are fairly intuitive to find, and others are sort of buried in different places. So we tried to create a specific article or chapter, whatever you want to call it, for the new code that has everything in one place. And it is lengthy, but again, as Scott mentioned, the idea is you only have to go to one section for the type of application you're working on. And ideally, everything you need to know is in that section. So you're not going through a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty pages. You're, you're ideally saying, okay, I'm doing a zoning variance or conditional use. I go to these ten pages and I know what I'm, I need to do. I did prepare a memo to go along with our review this evening. And that memo, what I tried to do is highlight some of the key changes from the existing code to this, this new section of code. And what, what I kind of planned on doing was going through section by section and highlighting the key changes. And if you guys have any questions, comments, definitely feel free to stop me. But I, I do recognize this is a lot of material, and so trying to make this review as sort of efficient and resulting in as little brain damage as possible. So I'll just, I'll just jump right in here. The first section is general provisions, and these are sort of general items that apply to all land use applications. And what we've done, again, is try and consolidate all the general provisions for, for all the different types of land use applications into one section. And we've added language that clarifies that an application won't be made available to the public until it's been deemed complete by staff. This is sort of a minor addition, but I think it's important for everybody to just kind of be aware that if somebody submits an application, that doesn't mean it's all of a sudden available for folks to come look at. It needs to be deemed complete, which just means staff says, yep, it complies with, with the requirements for whatever type of application it is, and then it becomes available to the public. So just, just some clarifying language. Also added some language to clarify what happens if no action is taken on an application. And this is, we're, we're still working with the town attorney to review this and make sure it, it's okay to have this language in the code. But it, ultimately, it says if no action is taken, which in my experience is pretty rare, but I think it's important to clarify what happens if, if an action isn't taken on an application. And what the language says is if, if there's no action, it, it is equivalent to a denial of the application. And then we added some language to clarify the requirement for withdrawing an application. The existing code has some language that says if an applicant doesn't address issues with their application within a certain number of days, the town planner can deem their application withdrawn. That language has stayed pretty much the same. And then there's, if the applicant decides to withdraw their application, we said, added some language that says they either need to put something in writing and, and give that to the town, or if they're at a, a public hearing and, and they sense things aren't going their way, they can state for the record that they're withdrawing their application. So just trying to clarify, adding clarifying language around the requirements for withdrawing an application, and, and making sure that it's clear that there has to be some sort of documentation that an applicant is withdrawing. They can't just kind of withdraw and not tell anybody. I'll pause there. Any questions, comments?
I have questions, of course.
On what he's saying right now, on the whole thing?
Just on the general provisions. I mean, do you think, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go section by section and get all the questions for that section answered?
I think that's the best.
Okay.
So you want to do general provisions?
I have questions on general.
Yes.
So the first one is related to the first high level change, which is around the making application public. My question for Matt and staff, is there any scenario where an application would not be made public? Whether it's like, it's in litigation, or there's an NDA on it, like, is there any, is the way that this reads is that every application will be made public?
Yeah.
And so I'm just wondering if there's, if we're stepping on ourselves, like, if there's something that we're not thinking of that it were.
It's something we can bring up with Mike, but I'm not aware of anything that would, I mean, once it's deemed complete, and that's, you know, I think what, what Matt has done is put in writing what we do in practice, and what is in writing and in practice in most jurisdictions, as once your application is accepted as complete, then it is public record. And it can be, you know, made available to the public through an open records request or whatnot. So, but I don't, I don't really know how to answer that question, because I've never, we have applications that certainly have wound up in lawsuits and litigation, but the actual application itself would still be subject to a cora request. The litigation, perhaps not, then whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm just, I, it's just maybe we should just ask Mike if there's any scenario that these three bullet points wouldn't apply to, that we need some other just clause, you know, nicely drafted. And then my next question upon, like, in this, applications being made public, is that we obviously live in a small community, you know, Eagle County, and there are definitely instances where people make their intent public regardless, because they either want some PR or something, you know, they're saying, well, I purchased this and this is what I'm going to do, because they want to start having those PRs. If somebody makes their intent public, we still have to keep it private. Like, we still can't release the application with, through, like, any sort of requests. Like, I'm trying to think of an example, more so, it's more in the town avail, like, where, you know, we'd have somebody purchase a piece of property and intend to.
People can.
Same, but with this, if they make it public, we still, if they make it public, we still have to keep it private. The town still has to keep it private.
I don't know, we, we could certainly, if someone came to us with a pre-application meeting and somebody else said, hey, have you heard from my neighbor? And we could say, yes, we've had a pre-application meeting with them.
Got it.
Right?
Yeah.
But I think what this is trying to do is clarify that, you know, if there's an actual live application, it doesn't become.
Public in total, all of them.
Right. And, and, and that's really to protect, I think, the process and the applicant themselves. If they've submitted an incomplete application and we're doling it out to people and they're still working on making it complete, it's not a fair representation of the actual application, if that makes sense. And, and it doesn't, it doesn't relate to the application that's going to, from that point forward, make its way through a public process of review, referral to agencies, review by staff, review by planning commission. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, that is. So just the first question to Mike, if there's anything that would need to be, that could be.
Okay. The way I stated the question is, is there any situation where an application would not be made public?
Correct. Yeah. And then my last question is, is that we're explicit, and this isn't just within this section of the code, but it's in a number of other sections. But if, you know, the first, the first instance of it happens to be in general provisions, is where we say, like, you know, in the last, we say, you know, if an application is going to be withdrawn, like, we're going to provide them notice, like, if it's an administrative withdrawal, we'll provide them notice in writing. Do we, do we ever think in the future we're going to have to do things electronically? Do we need to leave that nuance open, that written is also acceptable?
Right. So if, if written notice includes emails, I, I think that, is that where you're getting at, or?
Yeah, but emails, when you're talking about administrative withdrawal, I would think it would have to be tighter than email. It'd have to be like, actual, like, delivery, you know, some sort of email delivery system that you can actually see, you know, the, the person on the other end, either received it and opened it, or, you know, has accepted it. Like, do we, I mean, I just don't know. I mean, in the banking, we do, that's why I'm asking.
I think it's implied that it would be a written letter on, on letterhead, and signed by someone who has a visual capacity with the town. But if we need to be more specific about the form of written notice, we could do that.
Notice the question, like, or I was more thinking, like, in the future, we wouldn't want, like, the way things are going, we'd need to be through an electronic delivery method that, you know, complied with the written notice.
That sounds scary.
Well, this is.
I mean, I work for a bank, guys.
That, that is currently how we do it. We, we write the letter on letterhead, sign, and then we just send it electronically if we have their email. And oftentimes, we just send it to ourselves as well to ensure that it's delivered. I can't make, I can't make
But that's not a delivery.
I can't make people read it. I mean, if I send it through certified mail, they sign for it, they could throw it in the trash. I mean.
Yeah, no.
One form of delivery is the same as the other.
Got you, son.
Got you, son.
I, I would say with notice, that type of notice, and again, I'm not an attorney here, but I think unless it's explicit in the code, I, I think as long as notice is sent, sort of, within the parameters of the code, whether or not somebody receives it, as Madison just men, mentioned, I mean, some people with certified mail or return receipt won't sign, that's on them. I, I mean, as long as the town has, and there's a record, whether that's a return receipt, certified mail receipt, or even, I mean, your email records, the, the town's email records are subject to public record. So, I mean, there's, there's some sort of record that notice was sent in compliance with the code by the town. Whether or not the, the applicant gets that or opens it, that's, I, I don't, I don't know that that's on the town to make sure that occurred. Yep.
Just asking. Okay, thank you. That was it.
I got one thing on that section.
How about if we start?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know, I didn't know if we were stopping.
No, I was gonna say, Daryl, do you have anything? Eric, do you have anything? Michael, go for it.
Well, I just have, I just have one note on that, Matt. On C, public review of application, as far as, like, being thorough goes, trying to be more thorough and stuff, which dot our eyes across our teeth. It says, it'll be deemed complete in accordance with this article. On a lot of stuff, I know everything can't be done because there's certain variables to it. But I, I'd like to see somehow, on a lot of the stuff we approved, there's like fifteen items from the engineer that haven't been sorted out. And I'd like us to look into potentially the stuff that can be sorted out prior to the application. I know, like I said, I know there's a lot of stuff that's, that can't be done, and there's variables in it. But on a, a lot of stuff that we see, we see, like, random bullet points, and some of them are basic. So if we're saying complete, I'd like to try to look in how we can just get a little bit more complete in that regard. That's all I had on that.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean, Matt?
I, I think so. I, I mean, so, so with completeness, and, I mean, if we need to define completeness, we could do that. Usually, I mean, my experience has been completeness is, there's, you have the, the middle item checklist in the code, and as long as you submit every item that's required, your application's deemed complete. There's still maybe, I mean, the town and the planning commission and the town council can always request additional information to say, you know, yeah, you submitted a site plan, but we need information on XYZ to, to really make a, an informed decision on what you're proposing. So.
I agree with, I agree with you on that, Matt. I, 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 that makes complete sense to me, that we're, that I'm sort of talking about something that's a little bit probably further down the road in the process. I'm, I'm talking about a lot of times that stuff comes to us for approval past the application point. So I apologize about bringing that up on this specific point. I, I was just talking in general.
Okay, no problem. I mean, if, if there's, I mean, one thing we can do is with submittal, I, you know, it's middle requirements for different types of application, we can always ask for, or, or in the code, be more, add more detail to what, or, or add additional items that are required, I, I mean, within reason, to, to ensure that everybody's, I mean, the town and planning commission, town council is getting the information they need to make, informed decisions on, on different types of applications. So we, we could certainly look at it that way, too.
No, I, I appreciate that. I wasn't, I, I, I probably not completely misspoke in regards to this. I understand when people turn in an application, they need to turn in an application, get a review, get input back. And where I jumped off track was when it actually comes to planning and zoning for approval, we're still missing a lot of stuff that could be included. And that is not part of the section sixteen five point one oh, so.
But it, it's a good comment, because we're gonna talk about submittal requirements as we go through this, or we could. But if, if we need to take a harder look at that to make sure that we're, because that was part of this exercise. We did that with the design review board submittal requirements about a year ago. We beefed that section up to be more clear and more, and include more things that need to be with our DRB submittals in the same vein of, let's be a little bit more specific about the types and the level of, of completeness of these grading plans or lighting plans, or whatever it is we're asking for. If there's still work to be done there, to make it abundantly clear to folks what we're looking for as far as level of detail or level of completeness, then we can certainly do that.
No, that's the point I was getting at, Scott. And I think you understand, after I explained myself four different times, sort it out, you know, like, when it's, when it's in front of P and Z, maybe the, like, some of the basic stuff that Jeff asked for that we see, some, some of that stuff, like, the tricky stuff, I know, and there's unknowns that I know, but the basic stuff, maybe we can try to clean up a little more.
Yeah.
If possible.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Since we're going this section by section, first I have two things. Matt, will we be getting the definitions soon?
So the definitions, we're gonna actually, well, the plan was to do those last. And the reason for that is, I, my recommendation is, especially when we get into the, the use table and what type of land uses are allowed in different zone districts, having a, a very ideally clear definition of what, what the different types of land uses are, is, will be really critical. And I think having, you know, doing definitions after we've said here are the land uses that we, we want to allow in different zone districts, that, that was kind of my thought, in terms of how we, how we sort of phased this. But if we need to address definitions sooner, we can. My only concern is, we may have to do it a couple times if we do definitions now, and then we had to add to it at a later point in time.
I was thinking maybe basic definition. And the reason I say this is, we have Eric here. He's brand new, he's never been on planning and zoning. And some of us probably know these things, and Eric can probably look up, he's a teacher. But I was thinking of that, in that regards, if you have no new people on here that are working with this for the first time, it might be nice to have them. But if you think it'll work out the other way, and he's comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, we're fine. You're resourceful, okay. And then I asked him, go ahead.
I was gonna say, another option would be, we can provide exist, the existing definitions from the code for reference, and, and those, you know, I, I don't, there may be some stuff missing from those, but it, it would be, it, it might help if that, that would be useful. We can certainly do that.
They're available online, or we can print them out, or whatever you need. We have existing definitions, so.
I would love them printed.
I would love them printed, too, so we can refer when we're going through this.
Okay.
Our media documents.
Well, and none of us, even if we've been here a long time, have actually ever helped design a code before, you know? And sometimes we work with some things all the time, and then something else might pop up that you don't know. So if we could get the existing ones, I'm happy to go get them copied and give them to everybody, excuse me, and give them to everybody. That would be great.
The, the only caveat to that is, and this is something that we want, we've identified to, to be addressed through this code update, is there are definitions sort of sprinkled throughout the code. Like, I think the sign code has definitions. There's probably a standalone section of definitions. And so they're, they're scattered throughout. And, and with the update, I think our goal is to consolidate all the definitions, just to have one definition section. But right now, they're, they are kind of spread out. I, I guess we could work on trying to pull together kind of what exists today into a single document or something like that.
Well, would you discuss that amongst yourselves? Well, would you discuss that amongst yourselves and see what you can come up with? But I think if we're gonna be going through the whole thing on chapter sixteen, I think it would be nice to have something.
Yeah. And if you have that document and we come across something that needs to be defined, you can make a note in the margins or whatever.
And then we'll see what we had. And is that what we wanna keep it?
I, I went through a process of what we did, the planning commission, five, five years ago, four years ago, um, the definitions. And we had a, a new document with old plus new plus reworded. I don't wanna go there right now because that would just add confusion and everything. So we'll start with existing and we'll try to pull together as many, um, separate sections of definitions that we have. I think there's only a couple of different places that.
Lighting sign, maybe something in the landscaping and regular. Thank you.
Sure.
And the other thing is I'm saying this knowing the answer, but the blue boxes is where you'll have your references as to where they can go look, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the ones that are on here. Because you can't really read that right now. So there's.
Those will, those will link to other sections.
Those will be, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be a final step. And, and I apologize. I know it's a little hard to use, use, use regulations with those kind of placeholders. The challenge is trying to put that stuff, that information in now. And then if things change, we have to go back and revise it all. So my, my experience has been kind of wait until the end when everything's final and then plug in those, those cross references.
It's a different section. It's the next one.
Okay. So those were my two on this. Thank you very much. Next, we go to section sixteen five twenty, land use application types and review procedures.
Okay. Yeah. So this was, um, this really is just a, uh, mostly a table that lists all the different types of land use applications and, uh, the various review procedures that apply to those applications. So it's, it's just intended to provide a summary of of the different types of applications and what steps somebody will have to go through. So it's, it's sort of at a, at a glance look at land use applications that are in this article.
Uh, Matt, real quickly, in your code assessment that you completed last, what was it, December? You had a similar table of the existing information, basically, the same, you know, the same types of development or land use application types? And who is reviewing them and who is making decisions on them?
Right.
Okay.
And which items from changed from that original from last to this?
So.
Go ahead.
Um, the, the changes, and, and I don't, I apologize, I don't have those, that code audit in front of me, but my memory, if it's correct, I think, um, some of the review processes might have changed slightly. I know zoning variance did based on what we're recommending, and we'll get to that in a bit. I've added, we've added sign variances as a standalone application type. And, and again, we'll get to that sort of at the end of the discussion. Uh, master sign program is a new type of application. And then the, the different types of applications required for a planned unit development or a PUD, we've spelled or, or listed each of those as a line item. So those, oh, and then we've added a minor desi- design review process. So I think those are the addition, um, from that, that table that was included in the code audit.
Anything else, Amanda?
No, I'll wait my turn for everything else.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize.
How about if we start with Jeff?
Well, I don't know if we're ready to get into the weeds yet, but just, I.
If we're gonna do this by section by section, let's get into the weeds.
All right. Well, then my only real issue with this section is, is the, I, I still vote and move to keep variance, zoning variances as a, uh, planning commission review as well as a town council review. I think, I, I don't know, but that's just, I don't know why we would not have a, a say in it. I think the, having two, two different bodies reviewing variances, given the fact that it doesn't come up very often, means that there's two chances of catching something that might be a problem and giving the public two chances to speak about it. And I'm sure there's a lot of reasons why maybe the, Matt, you guys think that we don't need to do it, or maybe the town council has expressed that why they wanna streamline the process, but my opinion is that it should still be that, that the planning commissions should review for zoning variances as well as the town council. That's the only comment I have on this section.
Matt, it's Michael. Hey, I, uh, as far as what Jeff just said, basically, I made notes on the whole packet, the top three things I put in chronological order. This, this one we got the draft last week. When I read this, I know Darryl wasn't here at the time. But I know that specifically what Jeff was talking about, I know that the zoning variance, you know, when, when it was decided by the planning commission, a lot of it's based on building. And that we have, we have talked about it with you at least twice, maybe three times, and voiced our opinion before about sticking with that. So, so that, that being said, a- as far as that goes, you know, that, and then we have the minor PUD amendment that we added. And, you know, that's, that's a new one, you know? I believe we don't, we don't need a new code with loopholes. And I think that the, the more, as Jeff stated, the more boards, the, the zoning a hundred percent specifically and the PUD, I would think so as well because we're here anyway. I, you know, because the, the, the zoning has always gone to us and the appeal was done by council if there was an issue. And that's been, uh, that's been going on, I don't know, for thirty some years that I've lived here, and Darryl probably knows longer than me. But that being said, that and the minor PUD amendment, there's a big chapter on this, on the minor PUD, starting on page one seventeen. And there's a lot of stuff required for it and it's pretty detailed. And we discussed it. And I know that when we started this discussion fifteen minutes ago, we said we were gonna go one section at a time, you know, and then move on to the next section. But this, this specifically is something that, you know, I think that we've discussed and we have made our opinion pretty clear and to just keep moving on and going to council. If we need to go to council and have a joint session with planning and zoning and council to discuss how we're gonna do this process, I have no issue with that because other, otherwise it feels like our comments are disregarded at this point, especially with this specific thing that we've talked about more than once. So that's, that's what I got to start with. I got a couple more.
On this section?
No, no. But that, that's, that, that, that's my, I've had a beef about that since we got the handout at the last meeting because I thought we had that pretty well sorted out.
So let me continue on that train of thought because I agree with Michael and Jeff. I've been on this board eighteen years. I've never seen zoning board of appeals even in front of me. I mean, in any phrase, in any pamphlet, in any article, I've never known. Our council is called zoning board of appeals. So that's right there, a question. Number two, I agree, we have the experience to work with variances from our point of view. We know what has happened in the past, which follows through because, for instance, um, when there've been things that didn't go along to code, so we've allowed them in the future to change. What do you call it? Like when Brian Sykes wanted to enclose his deck.
That was before me, I don't.
I know, but what does that, if, uh, if there's a word for that? And I'm not coming up with it. There was a house what he had across from you that had to do with the boundary and there was a part of it that had to remain the same. Those are things that went to variance.
Nonconforming?
Nonconforming. Thank you so much. That's why I want the definitions in front of me. Those kind of things we can rely back on and say, well, this is how we handled it. This is what we did it. It still has to go to council. One way or another, it's gotta go to council. We're the recommending board. But I feel that that's very important. That remains with us at the beginning. I have no doubt on that. And the other question I had was on number C, concurrent review of applications. Can we get an example of what that means? Or can you give us one verbally right now?
Uh, which one?
C, concurrent review of applications where multiple applications concern the same property.
So everything's like PUDs, or we take in a PUD application and subdivision application and amendment to the zoning application. All of those three things have to be processed pretty much at the same time.
Because of the, because of all things.
It's a PUD, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Eric?
No, I agree with not getting rid of things that we need to look at. I think at some point that we have a say also.
Well, and if I may go back one point on that, there was a meeting, and I believe it was during the last council, where this conversation came up and somebody said, well, this hasn't allowed you to do it. And a couple of the members said, no, we feel it should go, we should keep it there. We don't wanna be the final word on that. And that was a while ago, I will admit. It's probably a year, year and a half ago or at least. But I know the specific person who said that. And I still believe that that's the way it should be. One, two, just like everything else. Amanda?
I'm completely agree with the rest of, you know, my peers on the, um, on the commission. My other questions have to do with section B three, so agreement, agreement to pay review costs. And I'm not, I'm probably the least familiar with our old code, so not as familiar. But the way that this reads is that it doesn't leave, it says, you know, they, they have to re, they have to pay the costs, all the costs incurred by the town. It doesn't have any negoti- it feels like it doesn't have any negotiation component of it where other, like, would there maybe, and this is, I'll put it, would there be, um, applicants that we would negotiate costs with? Or if it wasn't just a cost we are expecting from them, you know, public art or something else that, would that be underneath that, this component?
No, we don't negotiate fees. We don't. We, we set our fees and they either pay it or.
This is just the fee schedule, not anything else that potentially would be part of the application.
I, I'm still trying to figure out which section you're talking about.
So it's same section sixteen five twenty.
Minimum application content, Scott.
Okay. We have, we have a fee schedule, we have a minimum fee, and then we have, um, deposits for application types.
Yeah, yeah. Is this also like if we had a large development coming through and we wanted to negotiate other things for the, I guess, the town?
Hmm, that's covered under the SA. It has nothing to do with the review of the application.
Okay.
They would still have to pay for all of our attorney fees, engineering fees, all that kind of stuff.
This is just saying that in addition to your base fee, you're gonna pay any additional fees incurred by the town engineer or my services or whatever it takes to.
That's underneath that section.
The SA covers public improvements, like free landscaping, that kind of stuff, that will cover the surety. But the actual review of the application and the time and costs associated with the review of the application, that is what this is covering. Not anything to do with public improvements.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And, and just to clarify, this section and the language under this section just states the bare minimum information that the town's application for zoning variances, conditional use permits, et cetera, requires an applicant to provide. And so on the application, there'll be a statement that says, y- y- you know, by signing this application, you agree to pay all costs incurred by the town associated with the review of your application, something like that. And then if town council wants to waive fees, things like that, I mean, they, I think they have the authority to do that, but, um, usually, I mean, the town, I think as Scott noted, has a fee schedule and uh, unless, unless you somehow get the town council to work with you, that's, it is what it is. That's what you pay.
So then my next one, and thank you for that clarification, Max. That was super helpful. But like underneath, um, seven, it'd be seven E, preliminary environmental assessment. The way that it read to me, and again, I'm, this is my first time, I'm sure I'll get way better at this as we go through this. But when I read this, it looked like preliminary environmental assessment had to be done for every single one of these applicant types. So even a master sign or a sign variance has to have a preliminary environmental assessment. So I, I wanted to understand, like, is that the intent?
It, it is. Um, but the caveat that, to that is that every section has new language that allows a town planner to, a- and when I say town planner, what we'll, we'll do in the definition section is the town planner or their designees. So that means Madison or, or, you know, whoever works for the town in the future. The town planner can designate somebody to make decisions on their behalf. But, um, uh, the town planner has the authority to waive application requirements. So, um, if they deem that that, you know, an environmental assessment isn't appropriate based on this, this type of project, um, that can be waived. But really, the preliminary environmental assessment is just, it's just a checklist somebody has to go through and say, yep, my, my project will impact wetlands or no, it won't. Or, uh, uh, you know, I, I can't list the criteria off the top of my head, but there's a checklist in the code right now. And all you have to do is go through and say yes or no to certain statements about whether or not your project will impact certain elements of the, the natural environment. So it's, it's not like, y- you're not having to do environmental impact reports. Uh, that would come after, if you say, yes, my project will impact air quality or wetlands, then the town planner can turn around and say, okay, you need to submit a, a, a detailed report about what exactly those impacts are. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but that material was not in here in this thing. I didn't see it in there.
Mattless talk offline. I think I'd like to take a stab at, at refining this because I think I see what Amanda's saying. I, I don't want someone to go, even go through the checklist for a sign permit. Uh, so there needs to be, there needs to be some discretion at the front end of whether or not that actually is applicable to a application type. So let's talk about which application types that might actually be more applicable to.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, and Scott, I, I mean, I think quickly while we were with the planning commission, I mean, is that okay with you guys if they, if we identify certain, like, again, a sign permit or something like that where maybe the town planner has discretion to say, no, you don't need to submit an, our preliminary impact assessment?
I mean, I think it is, but I would love to hear everybody else's. And because then if he calls out the, the flows, um, for each of the application procedures and processes, then that, that's where you could say where it's waived, you know, like, so in these things, it'd be clear where it's waived, what's not waived.
Right.
That would be more, from someone that's not familiar, way easier to use.
Good.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think just to tail off that too, like, as long as I've been here, I don't recall having that list of mineral estate owners and, and lessees as part of the checklist either. Maybe it's, maybe it's been there, but, I mean, it's that and the, and the, and the preliminary environmental assessment, like, on a checklist for Joe Blow, who just comes in and is gonna try to do something for the first time in the town. The, both of those things are gonna throw people for a loop. So, like you said, you guys should probably figure out what's an easy way for your average person to just be able to look at that and go, does this application, does that apply to me or does it not apply to me? And, and I think, I know for a fact that like the, the jurisdiction of the planning director or Madison or whatever, to be able to waive certain things is covered many times throughout this document. But it would be better if the intention, which it is, is to make this process streamlined for the, the user, then, you know, figuring that out. than, you know, figuring that out as an easy one on the front end for someone to know whether it applies to them or not somehow is important.
And, and just, and we'll get to mineral owner notice once we get to public notice requirements. But on that point, I'll just say quickly, the state has statutory requirements that are somewhat clear on when, when you're required to notify mineral owner notices. So that's, uh, that's something that we've asked the town attorney to review. But that's, as far as I'm aware, largely out of the control of the town. If state statute says you have to notify them, then you have to notify them. I don't think that can be waived.
No, I get that. I just think that there's probably a, a layman's terms way of, of having some language in our, in our application or in our, in our code somewhere that just kind of says, ask those questions to yourself, you know? I don't know what that language looks like, but there's probably a, an easy way of explaining it so that someone can just decide whether or not it applies to them without, you know, having, getting slapped later.
To Matt's point, I think we'll, we'll lean on Mike Sawyer to tell us which application types require this and be very clear about which applications types require it and which don't.
And mo, you know, again, most of, I think there's only one application type, which is a signed permit that's on this table that doesn't require a pre-application conference. So more than likely, you're going to, you guys are going to be able to, in that pre-application conference, go, by the way, you need to have this or you don't.
Right. Good point.
I'm going to go backwards for a minute here about its line. Because it says on the memo you sent out for tonight, it's mentioned under sixteen five thirty, but it's already being stated under sixteen five twenty. And my question was, why are reducing the notice for distancing, for notifying from two fifty to one hundred if it's always been two fifty? I mean, for me, that would be two houses on either side of me. We have twenty-five foot lots. I really don't know if that is enough. But if we had it at two fifty, why is it being recommended we go to one hundred?
That's probably Mike's thing too.
It says right on here.
That was actually a me thing. That was actually a me thing. When putting together the list of adjacent property owners, it is often eight properties on either side, across the street, catty corner. I mean, I just put together a public notice list for one sixty-one main, and there's thirty-eight properties on that public notice list because it, two hundred and fifty feet goes the entirety of the one hundred block when you put out that radius. Very rarely do people care unless it is their immediate neighbor. And if they do care, then they can see the sign posted to the property when they're driving by. They can read the newspaper. It is not just the written notice that goes out to property owners that they can rely on to figure out what's going on in their general vicinity rather than their immediate neighbors. And so in order to, one, reduce the amount of staff time that's spent on public notice, and two, to reduce costs for the applicant to send out certified letters. I mean, Mentor North alone had about a hundred letters that they had to send every time they had a public hearing. And so it's become a very frustrating part of just general process. So I asked to have that reduced to a hundred feet. And it is a hundred feet in the, in chapter nineteen, and that seems to work much better.
I will just tag on to that. Most jurisdictions are either adjacent properties, so the immediately adjacent or across the street properties were seventy-five feet. Two hundred and fifty feet is really extraordinary. But with that.
And for Eric, chapter nineteen is, is the historical chapter.
Yep.
And Darryl, I don't know, Darryl, I don't know if you know that, I saw. Chapter nineteen is our historical chapter. So that's what Madison was referencing, that it's a hundred feet.
Okay, yes.
Okay. But Michael will be making the decision on that. According to this, it says, this is under review by town attorney.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two fifty is pretty ridiculous.
Okay, Darryl, do you have any questions?
No, not so much. It's not so much a question, but, uh, to piggyback a little bit on, uh, what is said earlier about the home zoning and sign variances as well as the minor PUD. I know being on councils is very helpful to have the second thing. And if you have two, two, like, for example, the, the signed variants have not only staff, but also the, um, the, um, planning commission's input as well is very, very helpful. You know, just, just.
Can you reference why you know that?
Pardon?
Can you reference why you know that?
Um, I was mayor for about
Thank you.
Eight years.
Yeah.
On the council for about fifteen, sixteen years. So, yeah, it's helpful.
Thank you.
And now you've taken your turn in the barrel with us, Beyonce.
Now here on the.
So can I address that real quickly? No? Much likely didn't listen to you there.
Oh, that's all right. Good point.
But to, to your point, Michael, it's, it's not that we haven't heard you. If you recommend something, it doesn't necessarily mean that I or Matt agree with it. Based on our experience and what we see in other jurisdictions and the directive that we have, which is to streamline our process and make things less onerous on people. Having said that, I understand crystal clear what you're saying and why you're saying it. And, and the value of having two different bodies, especially a recommending body that usually sees a variance along with a set of development plans, opine on it and make a recommendation to the actual decision-making body. I don't think this is a hill that I want to die on. It's something that we are recommending because it's, it's a more clear process from, and a more predictable process for the applicant. If they have two different bodies that they have to go through, it takes more time. They don't know who, or they, they have to spend their time with a recommending body, which I, I, I'm just trying to think of reasons why we would keep it and, and through the eyes of an applicant. But again, I, I don't, I don't feel that strongly about it. Jeff, you bring up a good point. We don't deal with a lot of variances. So we're not dealing with a high volume here where it really is going to make that much. It's one extra stop along the way for an applicant. Again, I think I agree with you, the points that have been made about the value that you bring to the review of variance. And to your question or point, Michael, we do intend to bring this section and other sections to a joint meeting to say, here's the section of code or sections. And here's the, the work that we've done, the input that we've gotten from planning commission, the input we've gotten from your town attorney. Here are the key issues, variances. We think that it could be streamlined and it could just go to council. And everyone, if everyone around the table goes, hell, no, we're not going to do that. We like it just the way it is. That's really clear direction for us. As long as all the input is out on the table, our opinion, your opinion, Mike's opinion, and then have a really good joint discussion about that stuff. If it's really not that big of a deal that we have planning commission review at first and then it goes to council and it needs to stay the same way, fine. But we only have half that equation right now, so.
I respect your explanation for sure, you know? And I also agree, like, I agree that, you know, people don't have to agree, you know? I mean, you're allowed to have your own opinion, doesn't make you, you know, doesn't mean I don't like you. You do like you. Yeah. But, you know, that, that being said, that being said, uh, it's, it's, it's been, it's been that way. And a variance, a variance is a variance for a reason. And to streamline variance, it doesn't make any sense because you should try to build the code to start with and not need a variance. And the fact, and the fact that our residents slash whole body over here thinks it's a good idea. I don't want to have everything compiled and then go to a joint meeting at council with twenty different sections of code. You know, I understand, I understand some points of that, but I also understand that things getting expedited too much leaves a lot of loopholes in there and stuff that's not covered. And then that specific thing besides basic comments on the rest of it, that specific thing, I think it's been clear that it's how, how the planning commission feels and that I don't want it to, oh, do three more sections of code and then.
And I'm going to have one more strong thing to say on that.
Okay.
I clearly watched all the stakeholder comment meetings that went through on this. And I know for a fact, there was one architect who highly recommended sending us the variances. And that really did not please me. I don't feel that we really criticize it. We really tried to make it work. We've been here a long time, we know what variances have gone through. I don't feel one person out there should be, because it makes it easier for their life either. When that person is somebody who's putting something into our account, we, as Michael said, and as we have with Mentor North, we have a code. And they're following it very well and are going through it very quickly because of that. I can see where if it's an older home that you're building onto or something you're redoing, you might need a variance to be able to make it work. But if it's something brand new and you have a code and you've done your due diligence on that property, you should be able to make it work. And I know there are people in council who feel that way too. So that's just my little extra two cents.
Let it in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Anytime the word variance came up to council, that almost was like a red flag. They're wanting to change the rules or they want a variance from the rule. That was almost like a, a red flag. So that's why I'm saying it's kind of nice to have two opinions on any variances.
Council won't always go with what we decide. They might go with something under.
Think about it this way. The amount of time in years we put into rebuilding the code, you guys, us, right? We're going to end up with, we've had a great code for a long time. We've had a lot of loopholes in our code for a long time. And in my time here on P and Z, there haven't even been that many variances with that code. This new code is going to be so well thought out that if you're coming up with a variance with the new code, probably needs a hard look at why, in my book.
Hey, I, I, I hear you. This is a hundred-year-old town. Like, the whole, the entire town of Red Cliff is a variance. This town has variances galore because of what it is and how long it's taken to build out in every new situation. So I, I, boy, I hope we provide a code that is less prone to the need of variances. But I guess my point is, I, there will always be a need for variances. Someone's always going to come up, the minute you adopt this code, they're going to say, well, that's awesome. But we've got this unique situation over here on this lot that's unlike our neighbor's lot, right? And those are the things that you really should be focusing on and that we should maybe use even at a pre-application level to say, you, the applicant, really need to pay attention to these really clear criteria of, do you have an extraordinary circumstance? Do you have a hardship? Those are things that we already tell people, like, if you're going to make this argument, here's the stuff that you have to meet and here's the things that the planning commission and the town board are going to make their decisions based off of. But, yeah, I mean, I, I hope our code leads to less variances, so.
Well, I think that you bring up a good point in that there's, to me, there, I'm sure there's more than just this, but I'm, I'm simplifying it. There's non-conforming situations, which is all of Red Cliff and most of Mentor, right? So if you're in that bucket, you're already, you already have an uphill battle because you have a non-conformity that you're trying to either remedy or make better. In which case you could say, okay, well, I need a variance because I'm in a non-conforming situation. If I'm, if I am not in a non-conforming situation and I'm applying to do something that I'm asking for a variance for with the new code, both of those, to Darryl's point, are probably going to be red flags for the council to look at and say, okay, well, why, why can't you fit into the rules? And the first answer is because I have a non-conformity. Okay, you probably get some, you get a little slack, first of all. Oh, well, you know, just as an example, back in the day, when all the lots were twenty-five feet wide by a hundred feet and everybody, you know, in the mining days would say, well, I'm going to put my shack as far over on the property line as I can. And then you, my neighbor, you put your shack as far over on your property line as you can. Let's share the driveway.
Yep.
Because it makes no sense. We can maximize our two lots. Well, and then all of a sudden, things get platted and houses get built onto and added onto. And all of a sudden, here's all these non-conformities. Well, great. I still think that to remedy a non-conformity, to bring it up to somehow fit into the town, that takes a creative architect, it takes creative engineering, it takes creative and understanding boards. You know, but if it's, I'm plowing down the house and I'm starting new and I'm asking for a variance, well, then that's going to change the character of the town. Now it's not Mentor anymore. Now it's, I'm trying to do something out of the box that you're, you put all this time into this new code and I've still found a loophole for me to try to ask for something different.
That one might as well not regret.
Again, better to have two boards looking at it so that something doesn't slip through. And all of a sudden, we're all going, hmm, how'd that get done? Oh, well, we can't find the records on that. There's a lot of that, you know? So I think we beat it to death.
I was just going to ask you, do you think we owed it to?
I think we know, like, this, we, you guys know how we feel. And if, if we get overruled, then we get overruled.
And we will, um, I think as staff and consultant and the town attorney, talk about the feedback that we've received. It's loud and clear.
Thank you.
You know, if this is something that really doesn't need to continue to be an issue or a question mark, so be it. It's fine. We've got other, you know, really good stuff in here that we need to talk about. And, you know, Michael, I, when we get to it, if we get to it tonight and we talk about minor PUDs, you mentioned loopholes. I don't, I don't think we intend to have any loopholes if we're, if we're suggesting staff discretion and making things that are, you know, again, what we're used to in other jurisdictions.
It's just a new section, Scott.
Yeah.
It's a new section and it was just something like that went along and came off of the bypassing of the variance to us that a second, you know, sometimes talent ends up, we don't like being in litigation, and the more people that have eyes on it, the more opinions set, give us better stuff. And it just seemed like in that minor thing, which I don't even know that much about, there's seven or eight pages of requirements for it. And when I saw that, I just thought, it's new because I separated the new and the old and and what, and like Darryl said, second set of eyes isn't going to hurt.
Minor PUDs are, or minor changes, I think, are, are allowed now. We just clarified the requirements and anyways, we'll get there.
I don't.
I, I appreciate your.
I'm more, I, I don't know specifically about that. I think that our, the, the main focus point we've got across and that we all have a problem with having extra eyes on stuff. And, and that we can discuss more down the line.
Yeah.
But thank you for taking our opinion to.
We're not trying to ignore you and I.
Next, sixteen five thirty. Public notice requirements.
All right. And I just want to reiterate what Scott said. We're, your comments have been noted. I think, you know, there might be some, some items where there's a difference of recommendations between staff and the planning commission and we're, we're noting those. And, um, yeah, we're, I, I want to just reiterate, we're, we're hearing you guys and, and we're taking everything to heart. We're certainly not, our intent to ignore you and just bypass your opinion, so. Public notice requirements. So what we've done here is we've added a table that, similar to the land use application types, we've, the table outlines the public notice requirements for each type of land use application. Again, this is intended to be sort of a, an ad gland. use application. Again, this is intended to be sort of a, an at glance for somebody to look at and say, okay, here's the land use application type I'm gonna do. What are my public notice requirements? There's further detail, both in this section and then also for each application type that gets into more about what's required for public notice. As we've already discussed, there was a recommendation by staff to, to reduce the distance for notifying adjacent property owners. As far as the review by the town attorney, we're really just asking them to say, is this appropriate? Can, you know, can, can it be reduced to this amount? I'm assuming since it's already in part of the town's code, it's, it's probably okay. I mean, if there's concerns about it being reduced, I, I think we're, we're happy to hear those comments. I, I will note I, I think the code now does require town staff or the town to send out certain types of notice. We've changed that so that's all in the applicant now. So the town staff will no longer have to send out notices or anything like that. That's all the applicant's responsibility. So that's a change. I, I think from an applicant's standpoint, the further you have to, the, this sort of further radius you have to send letters out, it, it just adds expense to, to an application. Yeah, there, there's that side of it. But happy to hear any, I'll pause here and see if there's any questions or comments about that.
Public notice requirements.
Only that there's a discrepancy in.
I'm sorry. Oh, on a hundred feet?
Yes, specific to that. And then I'll keep going through these other changes.
In C, section C, number two, it still says two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
It says it throughout here, kind of back and forth, but it was in this memo that he sent out with the new pack of footprints where I caught.
Again, I'm, I'm only gonna throw it out there just because I, the only instance when maybe two hundred and feet, two hundred and fifty feet makes a difference is a variance. Just gonna say that.
Okay.
Michael? Anything on sixteen five thirty?
I agree with Jeff.
Nothing else on sixteen five thirty?
No.
I have a question.
And I'm not done walking through this yet. I just wanted to, to see if there are any comments on the distance. I'm assuming there are. Interrupt me if there are. I'll, I'll just go through these last few bullet points and then, and then if there's comments on this section, happy to hear those. So we've added language to clarify that for a major PUD amendment, you're required to notify all property owners within that PUD. I, I, I know this is a requirement in other communities. I, it may be a statutory requirement. This is something the town attorney is looking at. It's, I don't think there's language in the code right now that addresses this. So this was just new language that clarifies this requirement. And again, it, it needs to be double-checked by the town attorney. We've added language as I previously mentioned, that clarifies that it's the applicant or if they have a representative, a consultant doing their application for them, that it's solely their responsibility to address public notice for their application. So there's no longer a requirement for town staff to do anything. I, I know when I worked for the town of Eagle, we, we had a requirement where the town had to do some stuff and it, it becomes a liability issue for the town if town staff screws something up and an applicant says my, my application's being delayed because you guys didn't do the notice correctly. It's, I, I think it's just a good thing not to have the town involved with and it becomes a burden on staff time. And then we've also added some language to clarify that certain sort of issues with a public notice, those don't constitute an invalidation of the public notice. If, for example, and, and, and the new language in the code very clearly states what, what constitutes a minor issue. And, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but I think it's, if you misspell your name or something like that, you don't have to redo your public notice. Another thing that's in there and it's in the existing code now is if you have a sign on your property and somebody, and you, you made an effort to comply with the code and, and post notice on your property and somebody comes around and tears your sign down, that doesn't invalidate your notice. Yeah, because you, you've tried to make, to comply with the requirement. So that, that's all I have for that section. Are there any questions or comments?
I have one question going back to the one hundred square feet. And I think I know the answer, but I want to clarify it. On the block that I'm at, if you go to the north, it's two separate twenty-five foot lots. If you go to the south, it's one lot that's probably, or multiple lots that up to one hundred, but it is one owner. So it would be covered under that one hundred feet all the way to the end of that property or just to within a hundred?
Typically, when you do a measurement, it is something that you take a measurement using the county GIS map, which has some accuracy or some map that you have. And you're taking it from the edge of the subject property at any point around that property out. And if it touches a lot and if you skip over a public street, that's, that's the hundred feet measurement. So you, if you even touch a corner of a lot, it's usually best practice to include it.
And are we still on sixteen five thirty then?
Yeah.
Because I have another one.
Yep.
Under notes. Mailed and posted notice is not required for a comprehensive rezoning that is initiated by the town. So if the town were to change the zoning of a whole block, the people on that block would not have to be notified?
Where is that? What's that?
Which one is that?
It's on page four, under sixteen five thirty, down at the notes at the bottom.
So, yeah, we, and it's, it's more specific in the rezoning section and we, we can discuss this now or when we get to rezoning. The, the intent is there's a definition of a comprehensive rezoning under the rezoning application section. And I believe it says that if, if there's twenty-five or more properties that are included in a rezoning and that rezoning is initiated by the town. So yeah, it would be if the town were to update the, the entire zoning map for Mentor or a neighborhood. The notice of that, there'd still have to be notice in the newspaper, but there wouldn't be notice posted on property or mailed out. And the idea being there that if you were to do a substantial rezoning in the community, it's a pretty hefty burden on the town to have to go around and post notice. And I, again, I don't, I guess you couldn't post notice on private property without the owner's permission and mail out adjacent property owners. It, it becomes a very substantial burden on the town. And I don't think the town would keep a, a rezoning of a neighborhood a secret or, but that was the idea was if it's a town-initiated rezoning, then that doesn't require posting or sending out notice to adjacent property owners.
Can you tell me what it currently is, Matt?
This is what it currently is.
The existing, I, yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know that the existing code states what a comprehensive rezoning is. I could be wrong.
But how we treat it? Like, for example, when we rezoned the one hundred block into one hundred block B and one hundred block A, we did not send out any mailing notices or anything like that. No signs were posted. We just put it into the legal notice section of the newspaper.
There's a lot of public hearings on it.
There were so many.
But I'm thinking if you're taking a residential block and you suddenly turn it into a mixed use block,
Or vice versa.
Those people should know. Or what?
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. Those people should be informed personally.
No one's doing that.
Too down. So I'm like, stop it.
Well, that's funny. And Matt said something in there that kind of related to that, but it's not in this note.
So.
So you jump to conclusions.
I, I've just put in, I've put it, I've put a note in my copy of this document that you brought it up and that we need to double check with Mike. My concept of when we got to zone districts and we started having public meetings and then if we actually get to adoption hearings, which we will, for new zone districts, I, I wanted to go above and beyond to notify people. But maybe that's, that's a discretionary thing that the town does and this is saying the town doesn't have to do this. It doesn't invalidate a rezoning if the town doesn't mail notice to every property owner. Right? And that's what I want to talk to Mike about.
I would like to seriously suggest that we do that. That's the rest I have to say.
Okay, got it.
Because I can think of some issues right now where that will cause issues if that Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Yes. I would say if there is an adjacent property owner that is over one hundred feet and it's, but it's past the thing, we should probably send a notice to them. Like it could be a hundred fifty feet or something like that. And that person, I don't know if there's any place in Mentor like that, but I just think that they should have it. They should have some kind of warning or something like that or some kind of notice.
We're currently at two fifty. So, you know, that's what we were talking about because Lynn was mentioning.
Yeah.
Two fifty, but you're saying if we change it.
If you change it to one hundred and there was a neighbor that is over a hundred, I mean, people have no notice at all.
Yes, because some people do on multiple lots.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. So you want to change it from a hundred or from?
If there is somebody that lives, if there's no adjacent buildings, but there, it's over a hundred feet.
I see.
You know what I mean?
They're gonna feel.
Yeah, one has a feeling.
It's gonna be measured to the property line, not to a building.
Yeah.
And I think that would be problematic. We're either gonna be a hundred or two hundred and fifty or seventy-five or whatever it is. And, and that's what it is. We're not gonna, we can't make exceptions or be discretionary on that.
Okay.
I think I understand your point and, and I guess that's the part of this discussion is.
Do you know the example?
I'm trying to figure out his example. Like so.
But that's, I'm saying, do you know the example? So think of my house.
Yep.
Go south. That's one property owner.
Yep.
Multiple, multiple units.
Yeah, it goes just to Darren.
Is it one hundred feet? If it were a hundred and twenty-five feet, how would that carry onto it?
If it was.
If it's one property owner, it wouldn't relate?
If the edge of the property is a hundred and twenty-five feet away from you, then it would not be sent. If the edge of the property is within the one hundred feet, then it would be sent. Of your property line? Of the property line. Property line, not building. Got it.
Probably.
Property line.
Makes sense.
Yeah, if you're outside the, the distance, you don't, you wouldn't get a letter. I mean, in addition to the letter, the I think most applications require posting a sign on the property and then you also have to publish notice in the newspaper. And I recognize notice in the newspapers typically the section that nobody reads and it's in really tiny print. But there, there are other requirements for, for notice if you're not an adjacent property owner. I mean, that the information is made available to the entire community.
Okay. And my other question is just if we're putting this on the property owner to send a letter out, how do we know that they are doing their diligence to do this?
They have to prove their registered mail receipts. You have to turn them in.
Good question.
But to your point, like if, if you're, if you live a hundred and twenty-five feet away and there's a big sign there and you don't see it.
You're blind.
Got some new glasses.
It's gonna be up for ten days.
He could be out of town, you know, and outside.
I'm gonna go there at another level later and get the sign.
Hey, I like it.
Okay, Amanda?
So the only comment I had was on minor PUD amendment. So like a minor PUD amendment includes increase in bulk is the way it's described in the description?
Can we wait till we get to that?
Yeah, we're getting.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying like, I'm just saying for the public notice, to have zero public notice and you're increasing bulk. So in the like in our matrix, matrix for minor PUD, there is no notice requirement for my new PUD at all, which I think is a gap, especially when you look what's included in the P, minor PUD.
I got you. Sorry.
You're here.
Thanks.
You're here. That's it?
That's it. That was my one comment.
Okay.
Daryl?
Everything else then?
No, they noticed. It's already been discussed.
Perfect.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a note.
You ready, Matt? Sixteen five forty, public hearing requirements.
All right. So most of this language comes from the existing code. And we've, I mean, we've included the language. There's a couple sections or subsections that we're recommending be deleted or removed if the town attorney says it's okay. And the reason being that a record of public hearing in order of proceedings of a, of a public hearing, I'm not, I mean, my experience, I'm not used to seeing that stuff spelled out in, in a code. And if there's missteps, I, I mean, there's pros and cons to having it in the code. It, it spells out sort of how things operate, at least for order of proceedings for a public hearing. The issue is if it's in the code and it's not followed to the letter, somebody could argue that the, the town didn't follow the proceedings accordingly and, and you know, there's, there's opportunity for litigation there. I think the way I've seen that handled in other places is you have a policy as the planning commissioner, town council and say, here's how we're gonna run our public hearings. It's so it's not, it's not in the code. And then the public record of public hearing, I, I think that's addressed. I, I think when we talked about this, Scott Madison and I, that's, that may be addressed elsewhere in the, in the town's municipal code or the state statute. There's definitely statutory requirements around what constitutes the public record. So this may just be redundant or it may, if it doesn't mirror what's in the state statute or other sections of the municipal code, it could cause confusion or problem. So that's, those, those two sections we're recommending be deleted if, if they're not required according to the town attorney. But again, if you guys disagree, we're, we're happy to hear.
I'm gonna jump on real quick. The other, the other downside to that, you know, you, you mentioned it. You can, you can handle it a different way, which is to have policies, which we do have adopted by resolution. Those change over time. So every time you change your order of proceedings or whatever, then we have to go in and change the code. So it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have it in the code. It does make a lot of sense to have it as a written policy that is adopted by both bodies, planning commission and council by resolution. So you all agree on the rules of conduct and all that stuff and it, and it's guided by your town attorney and the state statute as things change over time.
So maybe you just spell that out that way.
This is governed by states, right?
Good. Yeah.
You know, you would think that you have to say something generally like that there is some policy. You don't have to necessarily say what it is, just that there is a policy, maybe.
And the hearing's being recorded?
Yeah. I don't, I, I think this is more like a Mike level thing than us.
I, I just wanted to note the other piece that we've added here, additional language that we've added is to help clarify the requirements for a continuance of a public hearing. And the idea is that it, it's, it helps clarify things for an applicant that if their, if their hearing is continued after a certain number of day or the planning commissioner, town council can only extend it or continue a hearing for a certain number of days. And it has to be continued to a specific date, time and location. And if it goes beyond that time period, which I think is ninety days, then the applicant has to consent to that. And, and the idea being kind of timely review of an application, planning committee can't say, oh, we're gonna continue your application for a decade. Well, get back to us in ten years and we'll talk about this again. It's, you have a certain period of time to continue a hearing and then that can be expanded if the applicant agrees.
I have one thing and I'm so sorry. So I mean, I know I want to, I think we need to get this right. So in the section I mean, I know I wanna, I think we need to get this right. So in the section before with the publication. The the. The public notice requirements. We are indicating that the applicant must do. Put notice in the paper of the public hearing. But then this section, if they have, we have somebody. Request notice of the public hearing outside, I guess of that, the town then has to. Provide that notice to public hearing. And I just want to make sure that's how it's supposed to be or. And the only reason I ask is because like you can publish it in the paper, but then somebody else, I mean, will you, you'll always know it's theirs. Then do you resend them the paper or do you? How do you notice them of the public hearing as the town? Out differently than the applicant?
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying. This this section about somebody requesting notice of public hearings, that's. That's supposed to be a general statement and I have, we may need to modify that language. The idea is. If you if you want notice of. Just generally of of land use or planning applications that are happening in return. Sign up for the town's email or newsletter, email it, whatever the town does. And you'll get notice whenever that's sent out and it may not be specific to something that's near you. It's just sort of, if you want notice of what's going on in town, sign up for the town's newsletter. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. I think we should maybe look at how we word that so that it, we don't overlap with the published notice of public hearing.
Is there another way? The other thing is we have that box outside. Can public hearings be posted on that?
That's what the agenda is.
That's what the agenda is considered. Okay, so it's out there anyhow. Okay. Anybody else on sixteen five forty? Sixteen five fifty, code amendment.
Code amendments are. Changes to the text of of the land use code. And the way the code, the existing. Land use code or land use regulations are structured. A combined code amendment and rezonings and rezonings are really a change to the town zoning map. So what we've done is broken these out into two distinct sections, because they they really are two different things. And the way the code's now structured now, they're they're sort of mixed and and it's a little bit confusing to try and understand what you have to do for each. So that that's the first bullet point is we just created two sections for one for code amendment and one for rezoning. We've slightly modified the. Review criteria for code amendments. In hopes of making them more applicable to the town's regulations or changes to the town's land use regulation. Again, right now, because. The code lumped together rezonings and code amendments, the the review criteria isn't. Isn't specific to one or the other. So we've tried to, by breaking these into two different sections, we modified the review criteria to. Hopefully make it more applicable to a a code amendment. And then. We've added language. To clarify the step-by-step process or each step that somebody has to go through in order to. Do a code amendment application.
Joe?
No.
Michael?
I just have one question. A lot of complicated stuff, Matt. Uh, I was, could you just give me an example of like D, just. The the waiver of application submittal requirements. I I don't know specifically what that covers, so.
Example, please.
Some some example of that, please?
Yeah, so like we talked about before, if. If you're proposing a code amendment and the submittal requirement says you have to submit a preliminary environmental assessment. The town planner has the discretion to say, you know, you're doing a code amendment that's really not. Necessary, so I'm gonna waive that requirement for you. And and so that that language that's been added for the the, that allows the town planner to waive submittal requirements. It tries to specify. Kind of what the town, there there's certain criteria that the planner has to meet to. To make a waiver. And then if a staff report's required in the staff report, they have to say, I waived. This requirement or this requirement, here's why I did that. And so there's there's some sort of record. And justification for the planning commission and or town council to see, okay, I see why this wasn't included and. We agree or disagree with you. Did that make any sense?
Yes, now that, yeah, that. Sounds a little complicated. Yeah, it makes sense.
Isn't that being done now?
There are instances um, where we have done that. We're just trying to make it more clear um, to give the applicant. A clearer understanding of what their rights are in requesting a waiver and what our latitude is in making those. And what Matt just said is a really important addition, which is. Adding some bookends on. Me or whoever sits in the planning director's seat, how? How much latitude I have. I have to make a decision based on some something. Not because I like Fred and he made a good case, right? So trying to be a little bit more objective and less subjective in those determinations.
So on that Scott, like. For example, like. I don't know this, I'm just asking. For example, like if if that was something, you waived this and that and whatever, it would still come, if it if if they came to P and Z. And it was something important, it would be a be a note of. What we waived.
Correct, which may happen because we included in our staff staff report, but if we adopt it this way, then it would. Show up in my staff report.
I see what you're saying.
Here's what we waived and why and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to compliment the way this is so clearly saying thirty business days or fourteen calendar days, whatever, because that's always been something people. Seem to ask at meetings. This whole thing, when you go through it all, it's all very clear that way. Other than that, I don't have anything on that.
The only thing I was gonna say is on for section. Of this, so D three. I would want, I would think that you, as a planning director, we notify. Either if the waiver is authorized or not authorized in writing. And then the other question is, because doesn't the town sometimes request code amendments?
They do.
Okay. And then would anything change in this if the town was the applicant?
We don't really apply to amend the code, we just do it.
Yeah. We most of the time do it.
Well, I mean, did you see, did you see an application form in the the ordinance that we processed earlier or no, it's a memo?
Okay, do we?
We just waive everything and have a pre-application meeting with ourselves.
Write it. Well, and you don't have to notice anybody either.
We call it a T V D and then we just.
We publish it.
Sure down through.
Yeah.
Call it a resolution.
Well, that's a, I think that's a. Good question. Do we need to?
Do we need to put anything saying if the code amendment applicant is the town? All of this section is.
Um, I would caveat that because I think, I I mean, I've done these where the town and I'm. The town is a back, I work for them and and we're doing code changes and I actually do. Do, I mean, I don't do an application, but I do a staff report that says the town's the applicant. Here's the review criteria. So I think it's important for, unless it's an overhaul like we're doing now, I think if there's changes to the code. And Scott, you may disagree with me, but I I think it's important to apply the review criteria and say. You know, we're holding the town to the same standards as somebody else.
Or we're waiving the review criteria, like the environmental thing, like.
Yeah, I I think generally we do. Um, the memo that was attached to the T V D ordinance tonight was pretty basic. Usually there's more of a staff report if it's it's a larger change to the code. Addressing why it's needed and what the findings are. So I don't think that'll change.
Okay. Just in writing then to get at that caveat.
Okay.
It would be consistent with other.
Daryl?
And not a lot.
No.
Section sixteen five sixty, please. Conditional use.
Conditional use. So. Conditional uses right now are. Under um, division four miscellaneous provisions. Which, and there's some other application types that are fall under this uh, division as well of the existing code. And and it makes them a little challenging to find. So a again, with this idea of trying to make the code more intuitive and easier to navigate, we've created a standalone section for conditional uses. We've uh, beefed up the requirements, submittal requirements for a conditional use application. To ensure that adequate detail. Is provided in an application. Um, and as we talked about. Previously, if there's other thoughts on on submittal items, we're we're happy to hear those. Let's see. The the code right now has. Sort of two types of review criteria. There's. There's factors you can be, to be considered, and then there's actual required criteria for conditional use. I know just for me looking at that, if I were an applicant, I'd be very confused about, and even if I were staff, I'd be confused about, okay, what? What do I actually require somebody to? Conform with if. If I'm reviewing their application, what are the criteria? If there's factors to be considered. And then actual required criteria, it's it's very confusing. So what we've done is modify. The code so there's just review criteria. It's very clear, hopefully. That these are the criteria you have to adhere to in order to get an approval of your conditional use. And then um. Like the other sections, we've added. Language that that hopefully clearly spells out the step-by-step process for a conditional use application.
Man, I'm gonna jump in, you know, as I am going through the the list of submittal requirements, they are. Significantly more extensive than what we require now for a conditional use. But I think that gets again to the waiver provision in each one of these sections. There might be a conditional use that doesn't need. A table that describes uh, square footage of residential uses or whatever, because it's not. Those are the types of situations where someone would submit in writing a request to waive certain provisions and then I would react to that and say, yep. This conditional use doesn't even need this table, wouldn't be applicable, it'd be silly to make them do that, right? I'm just bringing that up because this is our first example of. A long list of things that could be really useful in your review of commu- conditional use permit. But there might be several of them that are just not applicable. Based on the conditional use that's being asked for, so.
And and I just wanna back up real quick. So. Knowing that some of you are new to the planning commission, a conditional use. Is a type of land use that can be permitted in its own district if it's approved. By town council. So go through planning commission review and then town council ultimately makes a decision. And they're they're typically types of uses that. The town or the community kind of wants to take a closer look at to decide whether or not it's appropriate, kind of based on where. Where it's being located, what's going on around it in terms of development and and land use types. So it's it's, they're uses that are subject to a review. A a sort of more scrutiny than than uses that are permitted by right, which you can just do.
And Matt, wouldn't you also say that a lot of times they're they're sort of, there's there's a time-based end to it before they get reviewed again? They they don't just go on in perpetuity?
Sorry. No, a conditional use, if it's approved, it's. I I mean, you can, you can add a condition that it's only valid for a certain period of time. But typically, if, I I mean. I I've seen them where a conditional use, if it's approved, it it's a, it becomes a. A property, right? It it runs with the property. It it really depends on. How you structure the approval.
So was the, would we um, were the P U D north in that. Like planning where that, where they could store all the construction. Equipment and material, that's a, that was a conditional use.
It was a conditional use and it was a condition imposed on it that it expire unless they renew it.
Yeah.
However, for example, like Carl Kruger's duplex, he, that needed a conditional use and. Once, once you build a duplex, the duplex is there. So that conditional use just runs with the property.
And then the bike thing in town, was it temporary?
Temporary use.
Yeah.
Just temporary. Temporary use, okay.
But isn't, not to keep going down the rabbit hole, but isn't all of the lots out by the bike park conditional use permits?
Yes. Though. By the bike park?
Yeah, like where all the landscaping companies are on the way out to the bike park.
Oh, I got that.
Those are all conditional use permits.
Oh.
And they all, from my understanding, they all get reviewed every year again, whether or not they get to stay or they go.
I don't think it's every year, but yeah, I think we do review it periodically.
And that is the thing with a special permit or a special use permit or a conditional use permit, there's different names for the same type of thing. Unlike you have zoning and you have an allowed use, you get a building permit, you're good to go. Special uses, conditional use permits, whether or not they have time limits on them or specific conditions saying you will get reviewed every three years. If if the town gets a complaint on a special use or a conditional use. And we go out and investigate and someone's operating that conditional use differently than what they were approved for, that automatically means they can be called in and reviewed and go before planning commission council. That's how it's supposed to work. In reality, in the county, there are hundreds of special use permits out there in Eagle County. County doesn't have the bandwidth to enforce and keep up on who's doing what for a special use permit that was approved twenty years ago.
So neighbors.
Yeah. Right?
The same as with our railroad yard?
It is. Those are specifically to be reviewed every three years. So it just depends. How you structure it and what conditions you place on a conditional use. Permit.
Well, I think this is. This iteration of. This part of the code is way better than what we have, so.
I just had a question on 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 D two where it says. I mean, there's a lot of requirements for site plan, which makes sense. And D two, I don't know whether I'm reading it incorrectly, but it says buildings and structures or building envelopes. If exact dimensions are not available, that makes sense. And there's setbacks, and I have an error. I have a, an asterisk. And there's setbacks from boundaries of subject property. Like, would would it read in there setbacks conform with current code from the boundaries of. Or such, would you add? Would it make sense to add conform with current code? Because if if we're making somebody measure all their stuff, like from the river and this and that. And they're sitting on their side setbacks, we're not gonna make the, am I reading that wrong? Or is that a good recommendation?
I I think what that's saying is they need to tell us what the existing conditions are on the property, whether they conform or not to a setback. What's there today?
Oh, right, right.
Are they three feet from the property line or ten feet?
Right, okay, you're sure what it is.
So, but to your point, let's. They had a pre-existing non-conformity and they're asking for a conditional use to do something that. You know, could add a use or put something in that building that is. You know, potentially having an impact on their neighbors. Because of the distance to the setback, that becomes part of your decision. Right? Because one of the criteria is whether or not it has an adverse impact on adjacent properties.
Yeah.
So I think that's what, all that's saying is tell us what the existing conditions are.
That makes sense.
Yep.
These conditional uses are driven out. They're specific to the needs of the person applying for it, correct? That person can then not sub. That person can then not sub.
Does it run with the property, or does it run with the conditional use or the business or whatever it is? That too can be altered, um, but if we don't say that here, that might be something we wanna either add or talk to Mike about. Do we wanna have, say, something that says conditional use permits run with the use? And once the use is discontinued, the special use or the conditional use goes away? Or does it run with the property?
Or what if one person takes it and decides they don't need all the space, but they've got the conditional use on it, can they then bring somebody in to use the other part of it?
Matt, what have you seen? I think I've seen it both ways, where code can kinda spell that out, or it can be more, um, vague, and it comes down to the decision of whether it runs with the land or runs with the use.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I've always seen it done discretionary, a- and that requires staff kind of advising town council or the planning commission that you can have it run with the land, or you can have it expire. I mean, it, it's certainly something that if it's in the code, it, it makes it more clear to everybody that here, here's, here's something we can, a condition we can add to a conditional use. Um, I, I think if it's language we add to the code, we wanna make it clear that this is an option, it's not required.
Okay.
Do we have a list of businesses that are allowed to apply for conditional use?
Anyone?
We have, we have conditional uses in the use table.
And we have uses that are listed as a conditional use.
That's what I guess I'm saying. So that, if the person gets it and then decides to bring somebody else onto that,
Exactly, like they, um.
Can't put a business in there that we don't.
That's a different use.
That's a different use.
Even if it says same conditional use, or if it's a different conditional use.
If it's a different use, period.
Okay.
Then it's a different use. So then you negate the condition that you got in the first place because you're
Change the use.
Changing the use.
So in other words, if you're landscaping.
If that new use is covered in the code as a use by right, then you're good. If it's a, if it's a new conditional use, then you would now be good. Or if it's not included at all as a use, then you're not good. I mean, it's kind of inherently like, to me, anyway, the way I look at it is like, a conditional use is exactly what it says. It's not covered as a right, you don't have a right to do this. It's a conditional use because it's a little fringy, for lack of a better word, right? It's a use that we need to look a little closer at because it's not common to do that in this part of town, or this, so.
And if that person were to do that, would they have to come before us and have that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a news.
Unless it goes with the land, in which case it wouldn't unless they changed what use it was.
Well, to like Madison's point, like Carl's duplex, he got a conditional use to build a duplex.
Yeah.
So now, it's gonna be duplex that sits there for, till the end of time, and if somebody wants to plow it down and build another duplex, they probably have a right to do that.
Yeah.
Is it, that's what we're saying, is like if they plowed it down, they could build another.
But they can't put a triplex there.
Right, correct.
Because it's a different use.
Like, for example, we, like, the conditional uses that I've heard up through the years, a lot of, a lot of homes, you know, in the hundred block area had been built with conditional use things because some stuff was so commercial and houses were built. And, and like it was, like it's been mentioned, like, pretty much once you build it, it's gonna be ass for, for a long time, you know?
Now, if, in the example of Carl's thing, if it was a duplex, then somebody came in and raised it and put a single family home there, which is a use by right, they couldn't then go through fifty years later and put a duplex back automatically, they'd have to come back for a conditional use.
If we still require it.
If we still required it to be a conditional use.
Yeah, I mean, that's a real big, like, woo.
Right, but once you, once you discontinue the use for a year or something like that, at that point, you have to do only use by right things or come back with a different application to re-up that use.
Oh, so there's a timeframe to, if you get approved for your conditional use, you have to ac- actually start your conditional use.
Let's actually act on it.
Three years.
Act on, yeah, that's what I said.
Right now, it's in the code, it's three years. But what, what you're saying is if someone, let's say they, they exercise their conditional use, they pull a building permit and start using their property under the conditional use, but then they stop, they abandon that use for a period of twelve months, then it becomes null and void. And they have to start over again. But if I'm hearing you correctly, we're, we're trying to kinda parse out, well, what happens if someone gets a conditional use and maybe it is tied to a business? And they sell that business, or they sublease part of that property, and they still run their business, and somebody else is running another part of the business, like, is that what you're trying to get at, Lynn, like?
Yes, sublease would be a good word.
Yeah, well, we have, we have conditional use permits in the railroad, um, U P property that are nothing but subleases.
The landscapes, especially, landscape companies, I know. But that's all landscape companies, what if it was totally s- something different? Who gets to decide? And what Jeff is saying is that we have a list of what can go there and can't go there.
Right, so like in the example of the, the U P property conditional uses, they all have a list of either eighteen or twenty conditions of what's allowed there, what's not allowed there, how stack and access the property, that kinda stuff. And so, if, cause I'm vaguely aware of the companies that are subleasing specifically from Reed, but if, if Reed decided to sublease to a different company, as long as they fall within those allowable uses within that conditional use, we're likely not going to make a fuss. Now, if they go in there and they decide to start, I don't know, jackhammering on metal tractors, oh, I'm throwing random words out there, a- at that point, we'd be like, whoa, this isn't covered by your conditional use permit at all, this doesn't fall within the approved uses, this needs to stop.
Yeah, again, like your neighbors are gonna throw you under the bus, anyway. You're doing something
They are.
that you're not supposed to do in that conditional use, though, and someone's gonna find out, it's gonna end up back here, and then the red flag will go up, and then we deal with it.
And now we have a code enforcement officer.
Right.
Yep.
Right.
For the thing.
So, Matt, just real quick, um, we have, we've covered revocation of permits and extension of approvals and duration of approvals. Maybe we need to think about adding a section that deals with abandonment.
Yep.
It's dealt with somewhere else in the code, we can talk about that offline, but.
Okay.
We, we don't have something dealing with abandonment?
I think we do in the code currently.
I thought we did have something.
No, I think we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And maybe to everybody's point, you know, the neighborly clause of like, if, if your conditional use is brought to the attention of the town, that it's not what it was intended to be, then you are subject to a review.
And Daryl, to your question, it may be something that shows up in an obscure part of the code that Matt may not have picked up and transferred over to this new section. But we'll, we'll do a code sweep and find that section in.
Matt, grammar wise, I just have a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay.
It's just page twenty-one, add in writing, three A. And then on page twenty-four, you guys referencing two hundred fifty feet again.
Oh, no.
I think we might have just changed it in the first section so that we could get an answer from Mike. And then if he says thumbs up, one hundred feet is good, at that point, then we'll make the wholesale correction through the rest of the code. I think that's why.
Makes sense.
Okay. I like that, yeah, that's my, I will say that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to go through, uh, kinda do a final sweep through the code to make sure everything's consistent. That, I will think that's one of the challenges with, um, the approach we've taken, where each, each application has sort of a step-by-step process. Um, we have to make sure that, because it's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of redundant language between each application type, and so, um, making sure the application or the language, that the redundant language is mirrors each other is something we'll, we'll have to. If that makes sense.
Yes.
Sixteen five seventy, design review.
Can we please take a?
Yeah, I was gonna say, anybody else up for a five-minute recess?
Sure.
I'd like to move around a little bit. Sixteen five seventy, is that where we're at? Design review. Matt, are you back?
I'm back.
Thank you.
All right, um, the design review, um, we've added, we've clarified the difference since we've added a new section that addresses minor design review. We've added language that clarifies the difference between what is a design review and what is minor design review. We've also added some language to clarify the submitted requirements for a design review application. And then we've also added language to clarify the step-by-step process for design review applications. One of the items that, um, I wanted to note is, um, it's my understanding that right now decisions by, by the design review board, and so, I'll, I'll just back up for a second. The code states that the planning commission also serves as the town's design review board, and, and I'm guessing many of you already know that, I just wanted to clarify that. And that, that, that'll continue to be the practice, there's no recommended change to that. Um, right now, it's my understanding that decisions by the design review board are brought to the town council for, uh, to be ratified, which essentially means town council sort of gives it their blessing. If that practice wants to, can, if the town wants to continue to do that, I, I, I recommend that there be some language added to the design review process that, that states that, that decisions by the design review will be brought in front of the town council to be ratified. Um, and then there's a note in there, um, about sort of clarifying, adding some language to clarify the process for modifying or, uh, an approved plan or design. Uh, right now, the existing code's fairly vague on a process for that. And, and I think what I've discussed with Scott and Madison is if, if somebody gets an approval, a design review approval, and they, they decide, ah, I wanna change what I just got approved, the process for that would be, I, I, actually, I'm drawing a blank on this, Scott, maybe you can remind me what we discussed. Was, was that to go back to the planning commission, or was that a, a town staff?
Um, Matt, can you repeat that, I'm sorry?
So, to modify an approval by the design review, a, a design review approval, if somebody wants to modify their approval, were we gonna have them go back to planning commission to, to get that approval of that modification? Or have that be? It's unadministrative.
Um, right now, we bring pretty much most modifications back through.
There's some little things that don't, that we've gotten approval from the planning commission to do, but for the most part, everything that's approved of planning commission goes back to planning commission. So there's a little bit of a threshold.
Don't you guys agree it would be impossible to define the threshold, it's two times?
Yeah, when we, uh, gave that definition to Mid-Turn North, it was with the caveat that, much like council's consent agenda, everything that we approved for them, such as, you know, okay, the window got slightly bigger or slightly smaller, something like that, would go to you and all staffs report, um, under planning department update, and for y'all to essentially discuss or call up if needed.
I have a question, um, this seems dumb, but right up at the top, under A, you define what all major construction is. But you don't necessarily define what is not major construction. So, um, as dumb as that sounds, it says all construction in the town not considered major construction pursuant to the section must comply with the requirements and procedures set forth in some other section.
Good catch.
So, what is not major construction?
So, that's, yeah, I hear what you're saying, it's, the intent is for anything that's, any out, or any project that doesn't meet the definition of major construction, that would, that would go through the minor design review process. So it's sort of a, a catch-all of, if, if you don't meet the definition of a major, or a design review, then you go through the minor design review process.
Isn't that just, define major construction, isn't there a definition on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything that adds, increases the building footprint and/or adds square footage of an existing structure and/or wouldn't also include adding a, any kind of additional structure, like a shed or a chicken coop or.
Chicken coops aren't like those.
I know.
Major, major construction.
I know, but it was for me, it was for me.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Trust me, it was major.
No, I'm sure.
Do you still have one?
I do.
Okay.
In fact, I got a garage full of chicks right now.
Chicks.
Waiting to safely move outside, so.
Good eggs, Scott.
Hence my car parked in the driveway.
Um, I, I wanted to add just one, um, piece of clarity. Um, with regard to, um, adding some language with regard to the council's review of DRB decisions, section sixteen twenty-one thirty, town council powers and duties already allows for a call-up, um, as part of their duties or powers, the ability to call up planning commission decisions. It doesn't specifically say design review board decisions. So that's kind of a catch-all, but I still think for any of these sections, there, I guess it's just the DRB, um, it, I think it's worthwhile to add that specifically in this process.
The council has a right to call it up.
Yeah. So someone's
Well, I mean.
searching for some other section in the code to figure that out.
Okay, we also should probably do the same for planning commission can call up minor design, minor design review that's approved by staff. So should be both of those.
But again, back to the
They never have a minor.
Back to the whole dumb question, like, if, if you think about it from like, just the, the simple question of, when do I need a building permit? For, for anybody, right? Or when, when do I need to submit a design review and when do I not? I just, I've never built anything before, I don't know. Uh, you know, is there any, is there anything that we're missing here in this first A section of the, what to apply, the, the, I can't even say it right now, um, applicability of making sure that we're catching it all?
I mean, the only thing that, when I read three, I kept saying like increases, like if I was somebody coming through the town read that increases the building footprint, either attached or not attached, or square footage of an existing structure. That was my only clarification there, that I was like on the definition. But I see where you're going, like, that's, it's, I don't know.
Well, I'm not trying to like, we're obviously trying to streamline the process, and we're trying to make sure that we're not missing something at the same time. But if it's, I'm sure there's uses or there's things that people wanna do that probably don't fall under the purvey of, you know, maybe it's, I just wanna put a hot tub. Or, you know, maybe it doesn't require designer view, but it requires a building permit because you've gotta do electrical work and plumbing work or whatever. Like, there's probably, just making sure we're getting it right, you know?
Your gas fire.
A hot tub would be considered major construction.
Yeah.
In this, it would be considered major. In this, it would be considered major construction, especially if you put a gazebo that could be enclosed around it during the winter.
I don't know. You could argue that it's not major construction.
Why is that? It says it.
It's not a creepy thing in a building.
Put a crane and says it.
It's not a building.
It's just sitting there.
It's just sitting there.
If you build a, a structure around the hot tub.
It's like your grill.
It may be defined as a structure or it may be defined as a building. Buildings are enclosures, usually with rooms. So, but it depends. I, you, we started with hot tub, but now it's a hot tub with a gazebo. So that's a discretion.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we would make that decision when they came to us and say, well, yeah.
Whether it's major or minor.
In gazebos, we have historically taken the stance of they're like sheds. They get a limited use review, but not really to the level of, hey, you need to provide us a survey with topographic information and all this other stuff because oftentimes it's four posts with some slats running across the top so that they can string lights or something.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take us down like a, like a rabbit hole here.
No, I think you're right. You're spot on. It should be a little bit tighter.
Some type of discretion.
Well, just, I guess my point was, in number four, if it doesn't fall into the major construction, then what does it fall under?
Minor.
Minor.
Minor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I'm fine. So let's move on.
And then, okay.
Cause there's a section for that.
But then on three, it says major, major construction to the building footprint or square footage of an existing structure. So if you increase an existing storage shed, then that falls in as major.
Correct.
Yeah.
Major construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is not right.
I like it.
It depends. I mean, most storage sheds are under a hundred and twenty square feet, so they don't require a building permit or count as really
Yeah.
a major thing, which is why we've.
Or, or, sorry, I should have said build it, or should have said shed. But if you put, add another structure to a gazebo, then that's considered.
When you say a storage shed is that one level or two, a hundred and twenty-five square feet?
And it can't be more than twelve feet tall.
It, yeah, we just need to clarify the definition a little more.
Okay.
What would be if you screened in the gazebo? A small structure.
Still a shed.
Still a structure.
As long as it's not more than a hundred and twenty square feet and not over twelve feet tall.
But if you added a second gazebo to it, that was a second hot tub, then now you're a major construction for this definition.
Why?
Because it increases the building footprint or square footage of an existing structure.
Why would you put a hot tub?
You know, his and hers.
I think we can clarify this because we're using building.
You're doing too short-term rental. You're renting with fifteen people.
Yeah.
We're using building and structure in the same paragraph. They have different compatible or symbiotic definitions in our code. A structure is a structure, which could be a building, right?
Yeah.
And it might need a building permit, but it depends on how big it is, right?
Yeah.
And we regulate impervious coverage differently and things like that. So we'll take another look at this.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, we got to that. Now, there's one thing in there that I'd like to make, which is I think just a small.
I think you skipped Michael.
We're talking about anything in sixteen five seventy, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause I got one thing that's, that.
Right?
No, no. I got one thing. I got one thing here. Uh, in G, you know, I love, you know, I love G because I think I'm the only one that conforms with G. It was part of the codes since two thousand eight, but building G with the ILCs, the building permits and the ILCs and the foundation ILCs and the framing ILCs and all that stuff.
Yes.
I mentioned to you, Scott, before, and it's not something that, that we need to get in deeply right now, but I'd like to definitely figure it out as far as the ILCs are a great thing. I think they're important. I, I have them all on my house and, and, uh, and, but what I mentioned before, like, for example, my house, when height was measured, it was measured from the exterior wall to the ridge. And I know potentially that it's changed over time, that at one point, I think it might have went to sixteen or eighteen inches or half the distance and this and that. And I just think if you could make a note, if you and Matt could both make a note, like, at some point, because of course we already have stuff in the mix, okay? But for future, when we're, when we're fine, when we're getting, when we have this written up more specifically into that aspect of how height is being measured, I'd love to discuss it.
Yeah.
At planning commission.
It's gonna be in the definitions, right?
We will get there when we talk about dimensional standards and also when we talk about definitions, we'll specify.
Yeah, no, just because it's been all over and I think that, like, I love the, the ILCs are important because the ILCs take the heat off the town.
Yep.
Well, the biggest, the biggest difference, correct me if I'm wrong, but the biggest difference between this and maybe the way the existing code reads is that now you need to have your ILC for your foundation prior to scheduling a foundation inspection with the town. And you also have to have your ILC prior to scheduling your framing inspection.
That just makes sense.
Big differences.
Makes sense though.
This language actually exists today. We, these are the, most of this is changes we made a year and a half ago or whatever this.
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, something like twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. So we're, we're now requiring foundation framing TCO.
Prior to.
Prior to.
That's great. I love it.
Anything else, Michael?
No, no. I, I, I love it.
I have one small edit, I think. Under D, under two A, did not say with a proposal to support a waiver? Or something like that?
That's in other areas. That's in the same one, same section.
Waiver of application submitted requirement.
To support a waiver?
No, that's breach right name.
All right, I have for the following.
The size, complexity, anticipated impacts, or other factors associated with a proposal support a waiver.
Yeah, that's right. That read right to me.
Okay.
Ah, yeah. Just have to read it twice.
Yeah, I've read it like three times. I kept going back and forth. I guess it depends how, which direction to get that from. Other than that, that's all I have. Do you have anything there, Darrell? Do you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Do you have anything, Darrell?
No.
Now, sixteen five eighty, minor design review. And here's what we find out what it's all about.
This is where we start going. Is the design review requirements, submitted requirements were more or less cut and paste. I know in discussions with Madison. The submitted requirements will be waived because they're, they're really more towards a more significant design review. So, um, we may need to look at maybe parsing those down if appropriate or just rely on the allowance for the, um, the planner to waive submitted requirement. And then a minor design review, the way we've structured this section is that it's an administrative review process. So it's a, something that's decided on by, uh, staff. And other than that, it, it mostly mirrors, um, the design review, uh, requirements, review criteria. And, and sort of the, the after, the, the building permit process.
I have a question. Just more clarity. Uh, ten B, it says, is a minor design review approval ratified by the town council? It, is that like, like how they do it now? Like, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What's the section that ten B is in? Sorry, I'm just trying to find it.
You should be at sixteen five eighty, minor design review.
Right, and then they all have subsections A, B, C, D.
Oh.
You're in ten on page forty-seven.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll just add, one of the, the questions I had for staff and one of the questions I still have that's a little bit unclear to me is how, how are decisions on design review, both regular design review and minor design review sort of recorded? Uh, for example, a conditional use, you have an ordinance that you approve and that's, that's the record. And so it's, it's something that I think still needs to be hashed out and clarified. Uh, and, and I think it's something we need to talk about with the town attorney. That, I think that language that's in there was a question I had. Um, is, was, is a minor design review, is that something that, like a, a normal design review, is that a decision that has to be ratified by town council? Or is it just the staff makes the decision and that's that?
Yeah, no, that, uh, yeah, I, I was, I was taking it along lines, Matt. I, it makes sense that what you're saying is a question because it's in different, it's in red and it has a question mark. And I, I was looking at it along the lines of, like, currently some stuff that we approve, that we approve and then just, for example, once it's approved by P and Z, does it get ratified? Like, like currently, we've added council ratifying our approvals. So I just wanted to sort of make sure that it was coming to planning and zoning still, whether or not it's ratified to council. Would be my question if you could.
Isn't that what you're asking? Don't you think there should be language in there that says what the process is? Like, where it can put on a consent agenda and then it can be called up or not?
That, that was my question for minor design review. Because this is a new section and it's a new process, I wasn't sure. It's kind of a question for both planning commission and staff. Uh, because with a, a normal design review, that's, that's decided on by the planning commission when they're, they're essentially acting as the town's design review board. And then that decision gets ratified by council and, and what I recommended, had some language in the updated code that kind of states that decisions by the design review board or planning commission get ratified by council, just so it clear. I wasn't sure if we wanted to duplicate that for minor design review. And, and just to clarify, minor design review, the way it's structured right now, that's a, those are decided on by, by staff. So it's an administrative review where, where staff says, yep, we approve it or no, we deny it. And then that decision could get forwarded to council for, for kind of their blessing or not. Uh, it was, it was something I, it was unclear what we wanted to require.
If, we thought it was going to council of their blessing and it was in regards to, to, to building just for the, just for the record, I think that we, I, if that's the case, P and Z should see it.
No, he's talking about something that this, this is, all of these minor things staff approves.
Oh, okay.
Like fences and stuff like that. Like, I think Amanda's suggestion of essentially mirroring the call-up clause from regular design review, going to council, we can just mirror that with planning commission. I mean, that's what we do now. We, we approve a minor design review application and then we let y'all know it's your next scheduled meeting.
That's what I was, it's good. I'm getting sleepy. Thank you. Thank you.
My question is under number nine. We've got approve, deny. Is there nothing for extension, you know, like temporary? Like we say, we're gonna extend it for another meeting or something like that?
Not for a waiver.
Not for a minor?
There's nothing to table.
They see it.
Yeah, but they make that decision. Would they not want to make that decision at some point?
Oh, right, but we don't have any meetings to table two because we don't have meetings.
Gotcha. Okay, anybody else? Eric, Amanda?
No.
You're all.
I might, uh, mirroring the design review, everything, same thing.
Section sixteen five ninety, limited review use. Matt?
Yeah, um, my, you guys, you don't, I know this is a lot, uh, but I'll, I'll keep plugging through until you tell me you want to stop. Limited review, so these are uses that are more or less a use by right, but there's additional standards that apply. Uh, for example, accessory, well, in this case may not, uh, be how it works in Mid-Turn, but uh, for communities I work in, an accessory dwelling unit is a use by right, but there's standards you have to meet. Like, it can only be a certain, uh, number of square feet. It can't have more than two bedrooms. It has to, the architect has to look like the, the, the main house on the property, things like that. So there's, there's these uses that have sort of additional standards. And so that's what this limited review use process is intended to, to address is, uh, it allows staff to look at a, a use and make sure it complies with these additional or supplemental standards that apply. And so what we've done is, is tried to clarify that that's, that's really the intent of limited review use is to allow an administrative review of a use that, that has to comply with additional standards. Uh, we've, we've modified the submitted requirements to make sure that sufficient detail is included in an application for a limited review. Uh, I did note right now, all that's required for a limited review use in the town's code is you submit a, an app, the town's application form. So, uh, we wanted a bit more detail than just the form. We've, we've added language to clarify the step-by-step process for a limited review use. Um, and then also added some language to clarify, so when you, if your limited review use is approved, the town planner will issue a certificate of zoning compliance, which essentially says you, you, you're proposing complies with the, the standard for that type of use. And we've added some language that just spells out what, what sort of information is included in that certificate of zoning compliance. Just, just to make it clear that kind of here's, if you, if you as the town planner approve a, a limited review use, you, you need to let the applicant know A, B, C, and D in, in this certificate of zoning compliance. Any questions, comments?
Jeff?
Well, I guess, I know you gave the example of an A to U. Is that the only thing in our use table that has limited review as, as a designation?
No, we, accessory buildings, home occupations, home businesses, flea markets.
Of course, the.
Rothen Dan.
Rothen Dan?
Never, never gonna die.
It's in like one district. Um, mobile home manufacturing sales, I think, is a limited use in South Town. Or maybe, no, Grass Creek? One of those.
Okay.
Yeah, we have ramps.
Breakfast.
But either way, to that point, it's just,
That's a limited use.
It's listed in the table and it, and this covers it.
Yeah, when we get to the table of uses, um, whether it's limited review uses or conditional use permits, we have had lots of conversations over the last few years with Michelle and I think with council about, particularly with Michelle, um, you know, these are things that if we can, if we can whittle down the list of things that we need to do additional staff review time or additional code enforcement, keeping up with this stuff, reducing the number of uses in that table that require either a conditional use or a limited review use and just making them uses by right.
But this certificate of zoning compliance is a new thing.
It is. It, what happens or what, well, go ahead.
I didn't think it was new. You did one for Steph and Spence like four months ago.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think it's been done consistently though, admittedly.
So it's something that Pat has been there?
It's, yeah, it's in the code now. It's, the limited review use section has limited code language right now, so it, it's a bit confusing sort of how the certificate of zoning compliance works.
Yeah.
Add the, add the, uh, responsible for all fees in there. So at least if you're spending extra time, we're billing for it.
Add the general, the general provision.
Add the general, the general provision.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna cover every application type.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta, you gotta tell us, you have to list how many fleas you have. For you to be able to say that it's a lot. Remember the old cartoons, the real fleas at the flea market? Okay.
Michael, anything else?
No, good.
I have nothing. Amanda?
No, but we're gonna get another chance to ask questions on a couple of these sections, right? Yeah, we'll see it again. Okay.
Is a limited use a conditional use? Can it be a conditional use as well?
I don't think so. The idea is that a conditional use is something, you know, if there's a use by right, that's a use by right. Conditional use is something that requires additional review and then limited use, limited review use is more akin to a use by right, but it's just slightly different than that use by right. So if a single family home is a use by right and all you have to do is come through DRB and then get a building permit. And a limited review use requires just a little bit more discretion and review and scrutiny for things like parking for a bed and breakfast within an existing structure or um, parking, uh, that's usually what, what we look at most for some of these limited use things. Comes down to parking a lot of times. That's, it's a pretty light review. Conditional use is a more scrutiny, more scrutiny, more public process. Potentially bigger impacts on the, on adjacent properties.
Okay. Okay. Is this step-by-step process, is that new?
I think we're building out more of a step-by-step process for that, yeah. Because there's not, there's really not much direction in the current code for limited review.
Process.
It says it's staff approved. And that's it.
Are you, are you feeling like it's too much or?
I don't. No, no, no.
It's, it's, it's under the table if you're a limited use.
Zoning, you want to keep going?
Yep.
I figure we can at least make it till nine o'clock.
Okay, just hanging in there.
Section sixteen five one hundred, rezoning.
Okay.
Zoning map.
So, eh, as I mentioned with the code, uh, code amendment section, um, the code, the existing regulations right now combine code amendment with rezonings. And so we've broken them out into two separate sections. Uh, so rezoning is now its own section and, and really rezoning is a chain to the town zoning map. So it, that's, that's a way to think of it. Um. We've added language to try and clarify what constitutes a rezoning. It, I mean, it's, it seems pretty intuitive, but we, we wanted to clarify it even further. It's more or less changing your, the existing zoning of your property to a new type of zoning. A, a new zone district. I, I should also add to that, we, we've also tried to clarify what constitutes a comprehensive rezoning, which we talked about earlier. Which is where it, it's intended to be sort of a large scale rezone, rezoning of a neighborhood or if it's, say, as we're doing through this, this code update process, kind of modifying the entire zoning map for the town. Tried to clarify kind of what, what is considered a, a comprehensive rezoning. And, and again, that's something that we're working with the town attorney to fine tune. If you guys have any questions or comments on that, definitely feel free to throw those out. We've worked to expand and modify the requirements for rezoning application to make sure that sufficient detail is provided in the application. And one of the, the key things we've talked about at, at the staff level is we, we, we need enough information to know that if you're reza, or changing the zone district that your property's in, we want to be able to ensure that you're not gonna the change in zoning isn't going to cause, uh, non-conformity. So we need to know what the setbacks are, where the buildings on the property, if there are any are located. Things like that to make sure that if you change zone districts, it doesn't, it's not going to create a bunch of problems. We've also modified the review criteria. Again, the review criteria in the existing code kind of apply to both code amendments and rezonings. So we've tweaked the review criteria for rezoning to make them tailored more to a rezoning application. Uh, we've added language to just more clearly spell out the step-by-step process for rezoning. We talked about this one too, that, uh, we tried to clarify that a comprehensive rezoning only requires notice in the local newspaper. We can certainly modify that if that's that's the preference. And then also added language, this is, this is more of a clarifying item that conditions of approval for rezoning are not allowed. You can't, you can't have conditional zoning, rezoning, you either approve it or deny it. Uh, this is something we're confirming with the town attorney, but that's, that's always been my understanding is you, you really can't have conditions of approval if you're changing zoning. It's either you allow the zoning change to occur or you don't. So that's, those are, those are the key changes that have been made to this section.
All I have is, uh, just kind of, it seems really obviously stupid, but the, um, not having a notice for a comprehensive rezoning, it seems like, who would do that? But like, you're not, no one's gonna pull the wool over a whole block, but it seems dumb to, to not just state, yep, you have to notify everybody.
I agree. Michael?
We would never do that, but maybe someday in the future.
I, I think if you're mailing out notice for building on your house, that doesn't hurt to notify the neighborhood.
Sure.
I believe major rezoning is a major thing and that people, we need to do the best we can to make people aware of it. And one small example, because public notice I'm going to mention, there was a it was Saturday or Sunday, this little bitty, only a little public notice in the paper. And it was about Minter's historical. And I forget exactly what it was relating to, but it was this big. And the print was so tiny that without a magnifying glass, I doubt that the average eye could read it. And that, I questioned it with Madison and Michelle and they said, well, we don't get to choose the size of the print. That they just do it what it is. And I still have it at home. So something like this to go out with little tiny print like that, that most people wouldn't even want to read because it's so tiny. If that's the only way we're doing with public notice.
It's not gonna happen very often.
No, it's not gonna happen very often.
Maybe once in a while.
It's not. However, I would like to point out that within Old Town Residential, I dug up a spreadsheet that I had done and during my internship. So this was like five years old, where I went through lot by lot and looked at lot coverages. But the spreadsheet gives me the line item list of how many are just within Old Town Residential and there are ninety-four lots within Old Town Residential. So we went through and, and rezoned that. That's ninety-four addresses that we have to track down. That's ninety-four times five dollars and ten cents a letter that we have to send. I mean.
I don't think it has to be like, like registered mail, but I feel like we need to have something that says like that we've made an attempt to notify, yeah, we could get Eric's, Eric's machine to sign.
What does that?
Well, so keep in mind that, like any code, um, these are particularly with regard to public notice. There is a, there is a minimum standard that has to be met from a legal standpoint. And everything else that we do, uh, mailed notice, posted notice, notice in the paper, or I mean, notice by website, signs up, things like that, that's all extra. And that's not saying that we shouldn't do those things, but from a legal standpoint, we're required by providing notice in a paper, however small it is. That does not mean that we shouldn't strive to do better, which we have consistently. I mean, that's one of the hallmarks of Michelle's tenure here at the town is to be transparent and to really focus on that aspect of the strategic plan by the council is to be transparent. And to make sure people know everything and Cindy and Madison and Michelle, they go, I know we're backwards to make sure people are aware of this stuff. And we still get people saying, well, I didn't know that. Door hangers, website, all these things you can try. But so I guess my point is I am happy to talk to, um, I can keep talking at the staff level about you know, for a comprehensive rezoning, is this what we want to run with as a, you know, kind of a bare minimum or do we want to do something else?
I don't think registered mail is the, is the answer. I'm just saying that. I think that's a waste of time and effort. You know, is it renting the, the sign saying that Primal Fest is going on? Linking as you drive into town and you're being rezoned. Like, I don't know what it is, but there's, there's something.
We own that sign. We don't have to.
Well, great. That's free. That's awesome.
We do.
Nice. That's awesome.
I knew that.
And I'll clarify, this, this would only apply to a town initiated comprehensive rezoning. If it was a group or neighborhood that took the initiative to rezone their neighborhood, they would still have to meet all the, the mailing notice, posting notice and publishing notice. This is just a sort of an exemption for the town if they were to do a comprehensive rezoning and and again, the original idea was, well, if you, you modify the zoning of the entire town, you really want to send out notice to everybody in the community. I, I hear what you're saying as far as are there other ways that are maybe less burdened some to enhance the, uh, the notice rather than just, yeah, tiny, a tiny print, public notice in the back of the newspaper?
But we are essentially looking at a rezoning town.
Yes, so and I, we've talked about how we're gonna notify people when that decision comes down. And I, I think we should go above the bare minimum.
Again, you know, if, if somebody doesn't know that it's coming, how, how is that possible in this town?
Right.
You know, other things we've done is there was a big banner on the corner of this building over there. Um, you're one of them, on the far end of the post office.
For Tom Greenham Day?
Huh?
For Tom Greenham Day?
Yes. You know, you could do a big banner in the lobby as people come in and see it. It's just exaggerating, not doing anything. Doing something more than just a colored notice. But that banner is very noticeable on the
I will reiterate with Scott that, I mean, if it's in the code, then the town is obligated to do it. Um. So whatever language we put for notice requirements, it's, I mean, the town can always go above and beyond, but if it's in the code, a-again, that's the bare minimum that you have to do, but you have to do it. There's, there's no way around it.
And, and the banner presumes that everybody gets their mail here, everybody drives by here. We have so many people who own property but don't live here. They rent out or they're second homeowners or whatever.
So if the neighborhood went up for rezoning.
So if the neighborhood went up to rezoning, it would need to go to the property owner who live in Timbuktu for all I know.
But if that person who lives in Timbuktu doesn't get any notice of it and he doesn't live there, he doesn't know what's happening to his property. I think that's unfair.
Maybe he shouldn't live in Timbuktu. He should live here where the action is.
Exactly.
I hear, I get your point. Every community deals with this, right?
Did you see, um, and this is just a quick talking about that, but on the news the other morning, there was a thing about how many, the percentage of homes in the mountain that's said empty are like forty percent. And that what they're thinking of doing is putting a charge, student house vacant tax. Okay. Let's give that, please give that more thought.
Yep.
A lot more thought. What can we come up with?
I have a question about, what percentage of people that are, are on the email list?
I don't have numbers for who's Minter nights versus other people who are on our email list, but our email list goes out to about seven hundred people. So I'm sure that's going to be a mix of, you know, architects and developers who have a vested interest in this town, to realtors, to business owners who have businesses here but don't live here. Um, so it's gonna be to a mix of people, not just necessarily the people who live here, but it's about seven hundred people.
I like the town talk.
Good.
Anybody else? Section sixteen five one ten, temporary use.
Um, temporary uses, yep, sorry, um.
Don't fall asleep on this yet.
I'll try not to. This is very exciting stuff.
We're almost to one twenty now. Come on.
All right, um. So temporary uses right now are, are another type of application that are under the miscellaneous provision article in the existing code. So we've pulled those out, uh, to make them easier to find. Uh, one of the recommendations that we have as part of, once we get to the use table, um, which is the table that lists all the types of uses that are permitted, prohibited, uh, limited reviews, conditional use in the town zone district. Also including a table that specifically identifies the types of temporary uses and structures that are permitted in, in the town zone districts. Uh, well, the existing code language says a temporary use can be anything that's a use by right or a limited review use. Which is kind of strange. Uh, it's not, not something I'm used to seeing. So I, I think, a-again, this is just a recommendation, um, but having a, a specific table that kind of spells out temporary uses and where, what zone districts they're allowed in in town. I, I, I think that would be helpful in terms of clarifying what is a temporary use and, and where, where in town do we think this is appropriate? The middle requirements for temporary use, uh, the temporary use application, those have been expanded, um, and, and modified so that hopefully somebody includes enough detail in an application uh, to make an informed decision on, on whether or not to approve a temporary use. We've clarified the, the process for a temporary use. We've also tweaked the review criteria for temporary use, um, to make them more applicable. And hopefully, uh, make them read a bit more clearly. As far as an approval of a temporary use, um, so if, if your temporary use is approved, you, the town will issue you a temporary use permit. And we've, we've listed in this updated language, a, a list of kind of information that needs to be included in that temporary use permit. So things like what's the duration of your temporary use permit, things like that. Um, so just, just trying to help staff kind of know what information they need to include when they issue that permit. And then we've also added some language to clarify the requirements and allowances for an extension of a temporary use. Um, the existing code language is, is not all that clear and, and not all that detailed on how, how somebody can go about requesting an extension of their temporary use.
Jeff? Michael?
Yeah, I like what you're saying, Matt, on temporary use as far as just spelling it out a little bit more so we can just look it over at a different, at another point, but that way at least we have an idea of what the, the general temporary uses are and because it's pretty vague and being that it doesn't go to the planning commission or council, it'd just be nice to see an idea of, or spell it out a little bit.
You only go to planning commission and council if they're, the temporary use is over seven days.
Well, that's a good explanation.
So we've actually removed that language and I, I apologize. I think I, I missed that part of my memo. Right now there's language in the code that says the town planner may, uh, forward a temporary use to planning commission, uh, for a decision or, or planning commission and council. We've gotten rid, that, that language has been pulled out because it's, it's, it's kind of strange. Like, a, a, as Madison mentioned, one of the requirements is if your temporary use is over seven days, then it goes to the planning commission.
If it's seven days, Matt, I don't need more explanation. I'm, you deal with that anything for seven days?
Yeah, my, my point is that there, it's, the, it's a may, so it's kind of the plan is discretion. It was kind of an odd provision, so we've pulled that out and, and made the decision on a temporary use, uh, left that up to staff.
Thank you.
Everybody else have anything?
So it feels like the, yeah, it feels like the submittal requirements underneath the narrative, based on the potential uses may be light. Like, there's not anything with like, we have parking and traffic control, but we don't have anything with like crowd control or lodging impact?
Lodging impact.
Um, well, I'm just thinking, like, if they, and, and maybe we just wouldn't allow it, but like, if they want to do any sort of like, like larger like, like festival or anything like that, like you're lodging and transportation impacts. Because the transportation falls underneath parking and traffic, but I don't know if would that even fall into this temporary use?
I don't think so. I think that's just an event that they get, uh.
With the event use, is that a permit?
It's like an event per, permit or an event license that they get through Jay and Cindy. If it's a festival, I don't know that that would fall under that.
Okay. Thank you. I was just reading it wrong.
But under security, you mentioned crowd control, is that kind of the same thing?
Yeah, I don't think it would necessarily then be if it's, I was just like trying to make sure like, because this is the shortest of our statements, I feel, in any of our uses.
Yeah.
So, we're good. Sorry, getting triggered too.
So, uh, the temporary use is not an event use?
Hmm, not typically. I mean, we have events at Little Beach all the time, but the bike parking tent was the first temporary use that either of us had ever processed for the town.
Okay.
Or submitted to the town.
But it's not like, but it's not like a big funeral or something like that.
And maybe it would be if they were trying to hold the funeral in like the one hundred block. Whereas Little Beach is kind of zoned for those or it's designed for those types of events. And so maybe that's why it doesn't need a temporary use. And so if you wanted to do it somewhere else that wasn't technically designed for that type of event, maybe you would.
But if you wanted to have a, like a New Orleans type funeral, where you break down.
That's just a party.
It is a party.
I'm all for it. That's a party.
Where you break down Pine Street. Something in that area would be.
That's not really a use. That's just a procession of cars. I don't think that that would be something.
I, I think we, when we go through the table of uses and decide what, what the limited things that we want to require a temporary use for, we should talk about those types of things and what kind of impacts they may have, whether they're a special event or a temporary use that we want to have.
Yeah, I think a special event is.
And maybe they become one in the same and that's some, that's another conversation.
Well, the, what I'm getting to is, is, uh, back when, I guess, back when, we would have, uh, uh, homecoming break. Have a homecoming, we'd block off Main Street. Was that temporary use? If they wanted to redo that, that would be completely.
No. I, I think so, but I can.
And I apologize. I think I triggered it because I saw examples include, perhaps special event park with shade structure. So that's what triggered my question.
Okay.
No, I mean, Lynn asked the question, like, a buddy of mine puts on a three day music festival in Buena Vista on acres of land. It affects the town for days at a time. And I don't know what provisions or even jurisdiction that we have or the code needs to have for something like that. We don't obviously have the land for it, or at least maybe we're not looking at it through that lens. Maybe there are parcels of land that that could happen on someday where a couple thousand people show up and there's a four day music festival. And do we have the infrastructure in our code to, to have it? Or is it just all under the, it's a special event, you talk to Cindy and Jay and they deal with it and the council stays out of it? Or maybe it ends up in the council's hands. Doesn't have to be in the, in chapter sixteen.
So I can, I can, I can speak to that because I actually dealt with, um, the guy who runs or did run the, uh, I think Seven Peaks event over in Chaffee County, outside of Buena Vista, and he, he had to get a special event permit from Chaffee County for that event. There was no temporary use requirement. So, yeah, I, I mean, it really depends on how you, what you define as a temporary use. And I, I apologize, I did include special event as a, as an example, and maybe that wasn't a good example to include. But it, it really, it's kind of whatever we define in this table that will create as a temporary use or a temporary structure. Um, and, and maybe, you know, there's a discussion we need to have about special events and whether or not that's a temporary use. If it's not, I think we probably need to add some language that very specifically says special events aren't considered a temporary use, but they're addressed elsewhere in the town's code.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're coming to a thing here. We can start this next one and finish it, or we can stop now if we want to quit at nine o'clock. What is everybody thinking?
It's a spicy one.
We've already had the spicy conversation.
We have.
The rest of it's all going to taste. I'm just kidding. There's still stuff that we need to.
I don't really want to go past nine o'clock.
Let's try to squeeze this in. It's only a couple pages.
Good.
I know there's going to be. Everybody's here tonight.
What are we doing?
Variants.
Sixteen five one twenty zoning variance.
Jeez.
All right.
Go for it, Matt.
We've already chatted about the, the process for zoning variants and understand that what we recommend in here is not in alignment with what the planning commission wants to see. Um, I don't know that we need to rehash that. The town's existing regulations for zoning variances have approval criteria and then required findings, and they're different. Again, it's sort of this layer of, of different criteria. So what we've done is, um, modified the review criteria for zoning variants to, to make it more clear and to only have one set of criteria that you're required to meet in order to get an approval of a zoning variance. So hopefully that makes the process of, of deciding on a zoning variance request easier to kind of say, yep, you meet these criteria or no, you don't. And, and that's the basis for a decision on a variance. Uh, we've also tweaked the language, the, the existing language are, are for the criteria of a zoning variance. Uh, from my perspective, based on what I've seen in other codes is a little strange. So we've, we've tweaked that and, and tried to make it very clear. And, and really kind of, I would say raise the bar on what, what you have to demonstrate in order to justify a request for a variance. And, and I agree with, with, I think what I've heard from the planning commission is, is variance is, you really kind of have to have a strong argument to get a variance. And, and I've seen in other communities I've worked in where it's, somebody does something, they realize they didn't follow the code. They come in and say, oh, I need a variance now because I, I didn't follow the code. And that's really not justification. It's, there's really some sort of unique circumstance with your property that's a result, that's not a result of your own doing that justifies your variance. Um, and then we've just really kind of, um, spelled out or tried to spell out and clarify the, the step by step process for a zoning variance.
Jeff?
I don't really have much other than making sure, it's probably a mic thing, but I guess just since you've beefed this up so much, just making sure that somebody's not getting denied the hearing or the, the, uh, the opportunity based on, it's, it's kind of almost sounds a little like you could get thrown out in the beginning because you don't meet the review criteria? Or you don't meet the, some, some review. Is that true or no?
No, you can, I mean, you have a right to submit an application no matter what. Uh, whether or not your application or your, your request for a variance will be approved is a different story. But even if you have a weak argument, you can still submit an application. There's, there's no ground to say, nope, you, you can't, I mean, staff could say, you, and I just did this for a, for the town of Debacke that I work for. There's a, a gas station that wants to have a hundred foot tall sign. And I, I said, you know, you'd have to make a pretty strong argument for why you guys get a, a sign that's substantially bigger than any of the surrounding businesses. And, um, the argument was there were some trees in the way. So, uh, yeah, I mean, they, and these guys can submit a variance application, whether or not, you know, staff recommends approval and, and the, and the town, uh, planning commission or town council ultimately approves a variance is, is largely dependent on whether or not you comply with review criteria. But you can always submit an application and see how it goes.
Jeff, you're, you're basically taking a, section A applicability on those specific statements that basically are like flashing signs, like, don't even bother applying if you're. I, I've seen this language in other codes.
Sure, there's.
I know it's defensible, but I think I hear your point, like, do we add a sentence in there saying these are not reasons for applying for or granting a variance? But you have the, all property owners have the right to apply or something?
No, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm fine with it as it is.
Okay.
I, 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 uh, I think that we beat it to death earlier and pretty clear on how I feel. And, uh, I, I, ever since I first moved to Minter and I was always to the understanding that, you know, if you're applying, it's for like a true hardship. And I, some, like, one thing I think happened on Main Street or whatever, you know, like, somebody's house burnt down, like sixty percent of their house burnt down. And of course they came in for a variance, put their house back together and pretty, and sure, it was granted, but that's all I have to say.
I've always seen what the biggest issue is, what is the hardship and is it really considered a hardship when we do these things? And I always feel that people shouldn't be doing their own due diligence on our code to know what is allowed upfront, not just to make it a minor change in the building or I want this or that. But it's not always there. I mean, they always have it. And when you buy something, if you're buying it, you should know what is or is not allowed with it. And I, that's where I have the hardest part with the hardship things, because a lot of them say, well, I didn't know it at the beginning or I didn't understand that. So how can we do something with clarification on that, due diligence comment somehow?
I'm not sure you do. I think it's implied and, yeah.
One thing we might be able to do is add some clarifying language around what's a hardship. Um, for example, a, a physical, like the topography of your property, the, uh, I, there's some, something to do with your property that wasn't sort of a, a result of your own actions that is causing a hardship for you. Um, so we, we could add some language like that that offers some example of a hardship. But if it's, you didn't do, you didn't do your own research and now be, again, I, I've seen variances where people do something, they didn't bother to look at the code and then they come in and say, oh, we need a variance. And that's not a hardship, that's just ignorance. So, um, I, I don't think that's justification. But I, I think we might be able to add some language that kind of says, here's some examples of what constitute the hardship.
I don't know if we want, I don't know legally if we really want to spell too much of that out because it could be interpreted either way. And I think we just leave it.
There are, there are, um, there's case law, uh, there are, you know, accepted definitions of hardship, things like that, that we could draw upon if we really get into that kind of pickle. I, I think I tend to agree with Michael. See, I agree with you. It's pretty subjective. Let's keep it, because I think, Matt, you were on the right track when we drafted this section and those criteria.
Okay.
Some codes do go into a little bit more detail of what an exceptional or extraordinary condition is, i.e. topography, shape, size, whatever. I, I'd be okay taking it that far, but to define or start putting bookends on what a hardship is or isn't, I don't want to.
You're just backing yourself into a bad corner.
Kind of.
Just leave it.
And, and because it, it also takes away your leeway, uh, and the, and the zoning board of adjustment in determining if it's actually a hardship or not.
Well, half the town is in a hardship because of what someone did a hundred years ago or something.
What if someone buys an existing home and they are, um, handicapped? And they need to put in a ramp and a deck and that violates setbacks and they're coming to us and saying, this is my hardship. Okay, is that a hardship?
Yeah.
Probably. It's a practical difficulty, uh, that has real world legal consequences on ADA access and stuff like that. So I mean, I'm, I'm good with keeping it pretty broad.
Each individual basis.
You, to your point.
As long as there's two boards looking at it, we're good.
You got it. Next. Amanda?
So this is, again, probably just my naive looking and not understanding, uh, maybe how the application comes through. Uh, but there's underneath the application's middle requirements via number six, which is additional information. Most of these zoning variances come in with another design review application, like that's pretty much. Uh, and so is that six supposed to intend that, like, that it's, that they have to provide that with the zoning variance? Or do we need to more explicitly state, um, underneath the application, one dot, that it's a complete copy application along with the application that the ver, the zoning variance is tied to? Um, I'm just not sure how, if, if we need to have it linked or if we could ever be fraught with a zoning variance, I mean, or through the zoning variance for setbacks, even though I don't have anything on the table, like.
Yes, I will be bringing you one next meeting.
Yeah.
So, so that bullet point was sort of intended to be a, a catchall that gives the town planner discretion to add some middle requirements that are necessary for sort of a complete review of the application. I don't, I mean, you could have, we could add language that says that you have to submit a design review application, but I don't. Not every zoning variance is going to come in with a design review application.
And we may require.
I see where he can waive this middle requirements. I don't see where he can add additional. Am I missing that?
Isn't that six, additional information?
Or requested by the planning director.
Photos.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. I got it later night. Yes. Okay, got it. Thank you. I, I see it now.
I, I have one question. I apologize. I was off in space. For being off in space for a minute when Amanda was asking her question. So what did you say you were bringing? What did, what did you say you were bringing next week?
I will be bringing a zoning variance without a DRV application.
A pre, what, what does that mean?
Can't talk about it until next week.
Let's not talk about it now.
Yeah, we'll talk about it when we get it.
You can do variance without an application?
You'll understand later.
Aren't you excited? You get to deal with something you've never dealt with before.
Something new.
Always an opportunity here.
Never a dull moment up here.
I know, I, I know we have these new pre-applications, so. Could be anything.
Okay, I addressed my question, thank you.
I have no, we, we hashed over at sixteen five twenty.
We will.
Jay, I'm looking forward to the next meeting.
Alright, Matt, I think we're gonna wrap it up for tonight.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks for.
Night, Matt.
So seventy one page, so page seventy one is where we stopped and that's where we're finishing next week.
Uh, we finished variances, so we will start on sixteen five one thirty, Plan D seventy seven, PUD.
Really nice work, thank you all for.
And hopefully next week we're going to.
Thanks for doing your homework, coming with great questions and sticking with us.
So are we gonna be keeping, um.
Oh, go ahead. Is there anything else? We have, um. Discussion items. Minter and Forward Draft, we did that, Managers Report, nothing. Planning Commission Comments, Amanda, is that where you're going?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be giving you the time period at five thirty for. Uh, considerable more time.
For myself.
Yes, y'all, y'all did not put bookends on when we would stop meeting at five thirty, so until we are given direction, otherwise we.
Five thirty is good. Especially as it gets darker earlier.
Okay, I will leave it at this.
Future meetings, we don't have any dates, what's the next one?
August twenty eighth and September eleventh.
Okay, anything, what, you got anything there?
On September eleventh, I will not be here.
Twenty eight. I'm good, September eleventh, I'm good.
I'm good, at least at this point, as far as I know. Okay. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting of August fourteen? Planning Zone.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Come out to the last concert tomorrow night.